I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Dave Farkinson, please if you stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening seeking guidance and direction as we once again consider the items before us necessary for the ongoing betterment of our city. We would ask that you would give our Board of Commissioners strong hearts, give them clear minds this evening so that they might make decisions that are in the best interest of this community. Thank you for everyone present tonight. We would pray especially for those in our community who are vulnerable and less fortunate, our elderly population and our children, Lord, we ask that you be with them in a very special way. And we thank you for those that protect us, our police officers, our firefighters, our emergency medical personnel, those first responders who give daily of themselves for each one of us who call Tarpon Springs our home. Hear us as we pray for each member of this commission seated here tonight. Give them wisdom, understanding, and guidance throughout the evening, for we pray all of these things in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Juan, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. The document, the presentation for tonight, it will not take a place, will not take place tonight. Mrs. Kelly is not feeling well, so we're going to do that another time. Ladies and gentlemen, today I've received many emails and many phone calls about the item number 23, which is the ordinance 2020-06, the sign ordinance. I discussed that with Mr. Licouris earlier today. We find out that the planning and zoning board, the business community residents, did not have enough time to review all the information that is on the ordinance, it's actually 71 pages. So I'd like to take this opportunity and ask for motion to defer it to another time, so the people have more time to study it.
To defer, Mayor, based on the reasoning you just provided.
Second?
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Mayor, can I say something, please?
It's a vote, you need to vote.
What's the vote going on right now?
I know, but I didn't get an opportunity.
You'll talk later, if you would, not right now.
Okay, I don't, there's too many business owners coming here to waste their time, so, no.
Please continue.
No?
Yes.
Is that a no?
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. The reason why I asked to defer it early, because I know many people are business people, they need to go back to their businesses so they can be more productive. So we're going to do that in the future, thank you so much. Do you want to say something now?
Well, I know that a lot of business owners did write us and send letters and texts and emails, but I know many of them will show up here tonight, and we have no way to let them know not to be here. So I just feel like this is kind of sudden, and it, actually, I agree with most of the business owners in what they wrote as far as, you know, being against some of these, some of this ordinance, but I, I just feel bad for wasting people's time when they come here. Thanks.
Thank you so much, all of you that are waiting for this item, you don't have to, but you can stay here for the whole meeting if you like. Thank you.
Mayor, since we deferred the item, would business owners in the audience still be able to make a public comment about the sign ordinance?
No, I think it's better because right now, many people don't have the information that is necessary, this is why we deferred it.
I understand, but if they just wanted to make like a general public comment, they would be able to do that, right?
Yeah.
Well, you can do that when we go to the public comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that. Okay? We're now going to the public comments of the items that would not be discussed this evening, if anyone has any, any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, you begin with four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners, Anita Protas, 901 Bayshore Drive. Do things, before you have your signed issue on the agenda again, please have public hearings with the business people that own those businesses so that they'll know you haven't had it yet and the procedure wasn't followed, that we know for sure, so thank you. Last week, we had a meeting at Currents on the issue of the city lot and Mr. Hoffman's lot on the bayou. We had it at a restaurant, and I think that's wrong. When you have a city meeting, you must have it here, upstairs in the conference room, at a city facility, the library, the old library, and when we're finished with the old, at City Hall, have it there. You have your city meetings in city facilities. No one, other restaurants have called and said, "We didn't get a chance to offer our restaurant." It's not right to have a public meeting of issues of the city and businesses. They must always be recorded, and you must have someone there with minutes. We couldn't even refer to the previous meeting we had because there weren't any minutes and there was not a recording. Also, it's wrong to have it at 5:00 or 5:30 at dinnertime and have it at a restaurant. This restaurant is an excellent restaurant, they make one of the best hamburgers you'd ever want to eat, they have good food there. Believe me, I try them all and I show it, but it's just not right. We're not there for businesses to eat in their businesses with a meeting, city, and city issues belong in city facilities, so if you will pass this down to the city manager, please. And it needs to be filmed because a lot of people have called and said, "Mrs. Prost, how do we know what went on, we can't go out at night, we can't go out at dinner, dinnertime." So from now on, let's be sure and do our city business in our city facilities, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Peter Lakkas, 514 Ashland Avenue. Before I begin, I will state here that I have three people in the audience who are willing to donate my time, Annie, Tina, and Margot, so that allows me 10 minutes to speak. First, 514 Ashland Avenue. First, I'd like to follow up on Mrs. Protas's comments. Thank you Irene, and whoever was involved in updating the city calendar. I went on there today and finally saw that we can see all the months of the year and whatever proposed meetings are ahead. So now there is a way for citizens to see what is coming, but what disturbed me was I heard about this meeting through an individual, and I checked the website. And if you look on February 20th, there is no meeting published there. Sustainability meeting, budget meeting, canceled, TRCs, nothing on the city website about a public meeting, yet the day before, in the paper, city officials held a public meeting in early December, they hold a second workshop February 20th at Currents. And I will just reiterate, that is true, what Ms. Protas said with regards to public access and accountability. Now, I come before you on a larger issue. At the Democratic Club debate, I posed a question to two candidates with regards to the issue of moving code enforcement out of the police department and into an administrative department. Code enforcement predominantly deals with properties and things of that nature, as many of us are aware of, and that's what building department predominantly deals with. Now, I sent the board a picture earlier today of our code enforcement officer who is also, yes, a licensed law enforcement officer, at the meeting, in the scope of his duties as a code enforcement officer, wearing a firearm. Now, I also sent a link to all the commissioners and the city clerk, so it's available if anybody wants to see, an attorney general opinion from 2012, from our famous Pam Bondi. And it's re court enforcement officers, law enforcement officers, firearms. Code enforcement officer not authorized to carry firearms within the scope of duty as code enforcement officer. However, law enforcement officer designated code enforcement may carry firearm in carrying out law enforcement duties. And there's questions here. First one, may Escambia County authorize the Code Enforcement Officer Act pursuant to Chapter 162 Florida statute openly carry firearms in the scope of their employment? If so, is permission from the sheriff required? And the response in sum to number one, a code enforcement officer is not authorized to carry a firearm in the scope of his or her employment. Should a code enforcement officer also be certified as a law enforcement officer, the carrying of firearm would be attendant to the individual's status as a law enforcement officer, not as a code enforcement officer. In light of the answer to your first question, no further comment is necessary on this issue. And later, the rest of the thing has to do with benefits potentially to the code enforcement officer, if he gets them, if he's not a law enforcement officer, but I won't go into any further, but I will read the next to the last page. In light of the foregoing discussion, it is clear that a law enforcement employed as a code enforcement officer is not acting as a law enforcement officer when he or she is carrying out the duties of the code enforcement officer. Accordingly, is my opinion that a code enforcement officer is not authorized to carry firearm within the scope of his employment, being as a code enforcement officer. Our code enforcement officer, when he acts as code, drives around in a law enforcement vehicle, in a law enforcement uniform, wearing a law enforcement provided weapon. So when he's acting as code, is he also acting as law enforcement, word is the definition or the line drawn? So that is why I proposed to the candidates and also to the incoming board for them to seriously take this juxtaposition out of the city. Because many people have, I'm, you wouldn't know how many people I run into, and one of the biggest issues is code and the officer who administrated it. We had Cindy Sanner in for a number of years, she was a civilian employee, there's nothing wrong with that, she did her job well, and that's what we need to go back to. Now, as far as our code enforcement officer and his capacity as a law enforcement officer, and why I think this is important that we eventually clear this up. I have a copy here, this is not my words, it's a special professional standards investigation report, case number 358-0397. And I will read it. On June 16th, 2008, a citizen named Blank called and left the message with Cindy Myers regarding an incident she witnessed during her citizen ride-along on June 15th of '08, and wanted Captain Young to be aware that it occurred. She advised that during her ride-along, the officer she rode with, later ID'd as Officer Matt Gier, stopped by his apartment and picked up a prescription and brought it to another officer, later ID'd as Officer Steve Gassen, who was off-duty with back pain. A subsequent, subsequent criminal investigation was conducted by Detective Wireman, which was closed as unfounded. In her sworn testimony, she believed the pills to be Aleve, a common over-the-counter medication. Captain Young began an administrative investigation to the allegation of providing or receiving prescription pain medication. Officer Gier in his memo advised that he did in fact stop by his apartment and picked up some pills that he received from the walk-in clinic as a result of a traffic craft she was previously involved in, but at the time did not believe that this was a prescription as he was just handed the medication, and told it was a stronger Ibuprofen-type medication. Officer Gier advised he did provide these, them to Officer Gassen to help him with his inflammation. Officer Gassen too advised that he received these and took them at first believing they were non-prescription, but after doing online research, found they were in fact a prescription anti-inflammatory. Captain Young looked through the Florida statute 893, and nabbing betone NSAID is not illicit controlled substance in this chapter. Therefore, as a prescription is needed to obtain this medication, it will be covered under Florida statute 499, specifically 499.0054, and the sale, distribution, purchase, trade, holding, or offering of any drug, device, or cosmetic is in violation of state statute 499.001 through 499.081, which is a misdemeanor of the second degree. Therefore, based on the facts contained in this file, it is clear that Officers Gier and Gassen violated the statute, which is in violation of the General Order 101.09, which is equivalent to violation of City Rules 18 in the City Personnel Manual, Section 1. Cause for suspension, demotion, dismissal. If subsequent to employment has committed or participated in any activity or action which undermines public confidence in the employee, or otherwise significantly impairs employee's ability to perform his or her job in a productive manner. In recommending discipline for the actions of Officer Gier and Officer Gassen, the personnel guidelines for disciplining action are not to be construed as a limitation upon the retained rights of the city, but merely a guide. The guidelines provide recommended penalties to apply for specific offenses. However, more severe penalty may be issued than that which appears in the guidelines if it is necessary in the best interest of the department and/or the city. The actions of Officer Gier and Officer Gassen pertaining to this incident demonstrated very poor decision-making, making processes on the parts of both officers. To violate state law in this regard undermines the public confidence, confidence in Officer Gier and Officer Gassen and to perform their duties. This is evident by the fact that the citizen ride-along thought enough of their actions to call and make us aware of this incident. Therefore, based on the seriousness of this incident, Captain Young recommends that this go above the recommended guidelines for a first offense of this nature, and issue both Officer Gier and Officer Gassen one-to-three-day suspensions. These officers should be advised that any subsequent violation of this nature could lead up to and include termination. Some of y'all aren't new to the board. You've heard the stories, you know what I'm talking about. So now it's time to start thinking about how we make our code enforcement more community-friendly and resident-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Carol Rodriguez, I'm with the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association. I'm glad you've postponed the sign ordinance, but what I don't understand, and a lot of merchants don't, because I've had tons of phone calls today, is we do have guidelines for the signage. And as a business owner, they get those approved. Why would we want to micromanage store owners with A-frame signs? Let them be unique, that's what is making Tarpon diverse, so I just hope you do not pass this, because you have a lot of unhappy people out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Fana Yotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I do have Padalima Mazakis, Alex Parr, and Nick Tavis, they will be donating their time to me, so, here we go.
How many people did you have?
One? Three.
Name, name the people again.
Padalima Mazakis, Alex Parr, and Nick Tavis.
Okay.
Okay? Good evening, folks. Before I begin, I was very disappointed in the mayor for apologizing for me for speaking the truth at the last board meeting. You will not silence the truth tonight, and please don't interrupt me.
I just have to remind you that you have to be professional.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Imagine being in a city where corruption all around you with the mayor and the city manager. Let me give you a hypothetical. Let's say a hurricane comes through town, and a tree falls in the mayor's sibling's yard. What should the mayor do and what should he not do? The mayor or his sibling should pay from his own pocket to have that tree cut removed. Now, let's say there's a business that bids on city projects. Should the mayor strong-arm that business to go and find and pay someone to cut the tree from his sibling's property? No. That is called a bribery. A bribery is a public, bribery is a public, by bribery by a public official is a state crime. Now, while on the topic of our mayor, I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Alahuzis. Two years ago, around Easter time, you were in Kalimnos, Greece?
This is not questions and answers, you're making comments.
And the public comments, though, you're the one who administers and answer the questions for the people.
You make your comments, please.
Okay, well, 2018, the mayor took our commissioners to Kalimnos on their Kalimyan Tarpon venture, I don't know. I don't blame the commissioners one bit whatsoever, but I will tell you what. Did you ever get a chance to think about what you were doing on that trip over there? Because I remember some of the commissioners posting videos of the celebrations that the Kalimyans go through, okay? Celebrating, very happy, and I just think it was very hypocritical, especially on your end, why you're our mayor, that, while you were sitting there exploring and, and really enjoying our Kalimyan tradition that was brought here for many years. The people of Tarpon Springs, the Orthodox faithful of Tarpon Springs, were being herded like cattle from Pinellas Avenue to Hibiscus to Orange Street, okay? You guys have constantly, between the city manager and Coshin right here, you guys lie to other government agencies to draw them in, which spends our taxpayer money, okay? The people on the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve, what happens? Everybody lights their fireworks, did you guys go stop them? Did you guys? And the only reason why I bring this up, I see on the Board of Agenda today, you guys have the procession coming. have the procession coming up. So, I think it's in the best interest of the commissioners to do whatever they can, especially make the Orthodox faithful happy again at Tarpon Springs. Whether it be spending $10,000 to $20,000 to get a legal permit of fireworks, let's figure something out, okay? Now, like I said, we also had a lot in proprieties with our city manager, Mark LaCorus. From the time as a city manager, or time as a police chief, he's created an environment that's a slap-on-the-wrist policy, okay? When your officers, especially if you're one of them, if you're one of the top LaCorian people, you guys sit there and let things go. And we're going to explain it all. But like I said, Mark, if you want to look at Exhibit A, Exhibit B, Mayor, I brought them right in front of you, the first two pages. I claim that the illegal activities that Mark's son was doing underneath the household of Mark LaCorus at 298 Peninsula Avenue, okay? I have the warrant, I have the deed, actually from the purchase of the property that was November 16th, 2009, as well as the sale of the property that was made August 13th, 2014. So, Mark, what am I talking about? Why am I up here for three years talking about your son Trevor and the stuff you knew about him? I know you don't speak much. That's the case. You go to any other Board of Commissioners meetings in a lot of other cities, our city manager is talking. Our city manager is active. Our city manager is actually qualified with his education. You know, I pulled up the website from our Tarpon Springs city website. It says you have a criminal justice degree from Behavioral Sciences from South Florida. Well, you know, I did a little research too. I pulled the request file. I did see your degree, and it says a Bachelor of Arts, but from the College of Behavioral Science. Listen, I may be fishing. I may be fishing. I don't know. But I want to make sure he's got the transcripts that apply back to criminal justice. But let alone, the truth of the matter is, he doesn't have the qualifications to be our city manager. He never did. All he did was basically take over, just like his dad did, okay? And everybody knows, he strong-armed the position. So, the city manager position is not a family business, okay? It's not, I want to compete or be better than my father at the position we're at. That's not happening here. So, but just like his father, when he got booted out from a power, a commission of power change, when he was booted out, I think the same is going to happen. History will repeat itself coming up, you know? The whole point of having our local government is to have checks and balances. Well, if the city manager won't check the chief of police, where are the checks and balances? There are none. Because Mark LaCorus, that's his baby. He's pretty much cradled the whole Tarpon Springs Police Department, including Officer Gassen, which I'm going to go on for a few minutes. And, I mean, the fact of the matter is that you guys still even have this guy after all the general orders he's violated? And I'm going to point out to Koshin how he's basically giving him slaps on the wrist. He's one of their guys, you know? So, we're going to move in a direction where we're going to hold our chief, our city manager, accountable. And then when I went to the debate between Carr and Mrs. Hales, the question that came up about an annual review of the city manager. And I guess there's never been an annual review of the city manager from all the commissioners put together. Well, why is that? How are we, the people of Tarpon Springs, going to hold our commissioners accountable if our commissioners won't hold our city manager accountable? You know, there's no checks and balances. There's no one really here or even brave enough to question Mark LaCorus or Chief Koshin. Well, here we are now. I'm just tired of seeing people representing our city who have their own dirty laundry, you know? So, well, back with all that. Might I mention, if you guys go visit that Tarpon Tourism website, half of that stuff may be a little bit overblown, but a lot of that stuff really deals with Mark LaCorus blowing our money and no one holding him accountable, okay? All he does is find another scapegoat to put somebody else on, and then he walks away scot-free. Commissioners, it's time to start looking forward. It's time to start looking forward. We cannot be afraid of a couple people that run our city and have an iron fist on it. It's not going to happen. So, let's just get right to it. Let's talk about how the chief, Mark, because I still call him the chief, I think he controls it all, he's the puppet master. Let's be real. We're going to go from the time where he hired Officer Gassen. Let's go with all these violations, these general order violations that Officer Gassen has committed, and you guys have let him walk away. And actually, under that amendment that I saw when it calls to law enforcement officers and code enforcement working together side by side, Officer Steve Gassen has committed so many general order violations, as well as breaking the law from that statement or from that article that just gave, was basically giving a pill to another person. Why didn't you guys arrest him for that? Why didn't you? He gave a sworn, a sworn testimony, a sworn statement from the person being accused of something is the greatest thing you can have. But not for the Tarpon Springs Police Department when they're talking about their own kind, okay? None of that. It's all flying under the radar. But they'll get your kids. They'll get your kids for 18 months probation, paying a lot of fines. I mean, even Mark knows, he paid a big fine for his son to get out of trouble. Ain't that right, Mark? So, we're going back to Gassen. You know, they hired a guy with a, I guess you can be a police officer with a general education degree, GED. That's fine. We can do that. But I don't think you have to have an overall degree to be able to do that these days. Well, here also I have another document on, this is dated November 15th, 2002, where the report was, we're going 2002 now, guys. 2002 now, we still got, we still got people complaining about Officer Gassen, who the city, he had so many general order violations. All they did was just supposedly sneak him out of the police department and put him in law, and put him in code enforcement. But the truth of the matter is, he's violated so many laws, he can't be a law enforcement officer, therefore he can't be carrying a gun, therefore he can't be wearing your uniform. He must act solely and strictly as a code enforcement officer.
Mr. Kulyas, your time has expired.
Has it been 10 minutes already? Really? All right. Well, we'll keep going. But anyways, there's a lot of general order violations.
You stop.
And we're asking for the immediate removal. Thank you. We'll be back next time.
Thank you. Just want to clarify something, that Mr. Kulyas does not represent the great community only himself. He may say kinds of, you now represent anyone, just yourself.
No. You represent yourself.
Yeah.
Anita Protes, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I'm listening to your presentation, some things I do agree with, but I want you to understand one thing. I have to take the blame for Mark LaCorus being city manager and one other businessman here in Tarpon. We came up here that night because working with his father, who was very good to this community, and everybody has faults, and God knows, I have plenty of them. His father was a very good son to Tarpon Springs. If he did wrong, I don't know about it, but I know what he did for the city, how he worked with the city. And when Mark became police chief, the commission wanted someone else. And I told his father, get out of here, don't even come to the meeting, leave it alone. I nominated Mark. We had to fight for it. The city manager that time balked me. I fired him the next day. True, it's in the minutes, he got fired. It's up to the citizens who they want for police chief. And that night, the room was full of citizens for Mark LaCorus to be police chief. And it was a hard decision to make, because I loved the two young men who were the candidates. So, Mark became chief, and the other gentleman became the assistant chief. Then it was time for a city manager. And a couple of us came up here and talked to Mark, got his ideas, and we thought he'd be very good because he's Tarpon family. I grant you, we fight constantly. The mayor can attest to that, and the commissioners. We don't always agree. Citizens don't always agree. But you have to look at the scope of what it entails. You've got a different issue than some of us have. But I wanted you to understand, you can't condemn people on everything in the city, because everybody's different. And I'm sorry it's come to this publicly, but I want you to understand that how he got to the position he got to, it wasn't just put in. It was a hard position, and he had a lot of support. And some people say they're sorry they supported him. Some say they still like him. So, you have to look at the whole scope of what goes on in this city. The police issues do not involve with him. If they did, he'd be back at the police department. But I have to say something. I understand where you're coming from. I know your family, and I understand the hurt, and you spoke well. But you need to know how he got where he is. It's because two citizens of this community came up and fought hard, very hard, for him to be city manager. And it wasn't just the commission putting him in. And I wanted to correct that, because misinformation can hurt a lot of people and can hurt.
Ms. Prost, stay on the microphone. Oh, you finished. I thought you, I want you to stay on the microphone. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Before we end public comments, I know a few people did straggle in. We deferred the item about the sign ordinance. So, if anybody would like to speak on that, now's the time.
Thank you. We are now going to the proclamations, item number one. Procurement Service Month. The City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and businesses, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to our organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships in suppliers and other departments with the organization. And whereas, the Procurement Service Department in the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes, supports, and practices that the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the Institute for Public Procurement as fundamental tenants of the public procurement profession. And whereas, has proclaimed the month of March as Procurement Service Month to further expand the awareness of the procurement professional role to governmental officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders. And now therefore, I, Chris Alahuzis, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Procurement Service Month. Jay, if you please. Thank you. And please thank all you employees. Appreciate it. You want to say a few words?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item? Public comments? Here now. Thank you. Commissioner Donovan will read the proclamation on the March is Reading Month.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas March is National Reading Month and March 2nd is Read Across America Day in Tarpon Springs. And whereas, reading on grade level is an essential skill for our children and youth to acquire for high school graduation and career success. And whereas, in Pinellas County, 46% of our public school students in grades three through 10 read below grade level in 2019, and approximately 25,000 young children will not be ready for school in 2020. And whereas, skills to read on grade level start at birth with families and caregivers helping to build strong reading skills. And whereas, children who read their own books have better attitudes towards reading and more interest in reading. And whereas, Read Strong Pinellas is a reading outreach initiative funded by the Juvenile Welfare Board of Pinellas County and powered by the Pinellas Campaign for Grade Level Reading. And whereas, Read Strong Pinellas is a countywide collaboration with Our Club Child Care, Inc., Pinellas County, County PTA, Early Learning Coalition of Pinellas County, and United Way Sun Coast. And whereas, Read Strong is teaming up with community organizations, faith-based organizations, and businesses to provide children with access to books and to support families and caregivers with strengthening their child's reading skills. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Connor Donovan, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim March 2020 as Read Across Tarpon Springs Month and March 2nd Read Across Tarpon Springs Day. And I encourage all families, caregivers, businesses, and community members to elevate children's reading to a community priority, make donations for books, and support Read Strong Pinellas work. And accepting the proclamation will be Lynn Tucker, Strategic Initiatives Director for Our Club Child Care, Inc., and Lawrence Clermont, President, Pinellas County Council, PTA.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and distinguished board members. My name's Lynn Tucker. I'm the Strategic Initiatives Director for Our Club Child Care. I want to thank you guys for giving us this proclamation. We were in an RFP situation where we were applying for the grant, and we had these nonprofit organizations sitting together in a room. And when the Juvenile Welfare Board shared with us how many children in Pinellas County who were not reading on grade level, we all got together and decided we were going to tackle this as a county-wide initiative. So, I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to share with you the importance of reading and Read Strong. Thank you. And if we can approach the dais, we have Read Strong wristbands and some books for some of the children.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you so much. Now, Commissioner Seabird will read the proclamation for flood awareness week.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has experienced severe weather in the past in the form of extreme rainfall or tropical system events resulting in flooding in coastal areas, and this flooding has caused damage and flood losses to homes and buildings in all areas, whether they are high-risk special flood hazard areas or low to moderate-risk flood zones. And whereas, the City of Tarpon Springs is a voluntary participant in the National Flood Insurance Program that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance at reduced insurance premium rates, as well as setting higher regulatory standards to reduce the flood risk and potential flood damage to their property. And whereas, the reduction of loss of life and property damage can be achieved when appropriate flood preparedness, control, and mitigation measures are taken before a flood. And whereas, the public education and awareness of potential weather hazards and methods of protection are critical to the health, safety, and welfare of residents. The Florida Flood Plane Managers Association have declared the week of March 9th through 15th, 2020, as Flood Awareness Week to promote awareness and increased knowledge of flood risk, the availability of flood insurance, flood protection methods, and how to prepare for emergencies. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Reyes, we're by virtue of the authority vested in the Now therefore I, Commissioner Reyes, we're by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of March 9th through the 15th, 2020, as Flood Awareness Week. And Kevin Powell and Megan are accepting this?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to thank you for recognizing the week of flood awareness. We really appreciate the guidance we get from this, this board as to the direction that we go in with our flood ordinance and trying to provide a safer community. Also want to thank Megan for all the hard work she does with the flood program and getting us to where we are today and our, our community rating system numbers. So I want to thank everybody for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item?
Page 514 Ashland Avenue. As many of us are all aware, being the Venice of the South, we are in a critical situation with flooding. Many people at the docks have complained about it. You've put in check valves. We're working with the Army Corps of Engineer to do things of various natures. Again, I reference the Democratic Club debate that was held last week. And many of the questions were about sustainability. And I would recommend that any of you who are interested in that subject, look on the city calendar. I think it's the third Thursday of each month, thank you Irene, that they have a meeting in the new conference room upstairs, which is nice, very nice. That came out real nice. So one of the things I got from that, the numerous questions were the appearance that the board is going to rely solely on the Sustainability Committee for all of this action. And that is just too much for one board to handle. They need concerted effort from the department that handles flood insurance and such. And I have to give kudos to Paul here, God bless his soul. He's put in extra, extra time finding things out about other cities and what they've done. But we need to get a hold of that and start getting hold of it now. Now, while I'm up here, I do have to say one more thing. With regards to how officials allow some people to speak and others not to speak when it disagrees or they don't like what's being said. You broke rules of procedure. I love Anita, but she already spoke at public comments. You should have said, "Thank you, Anita, you already spoke," or get up and speak up on another issue and tie it in. The last meeting when Panayotti was speaking, you kept interrupting him. I know he doesn't know the procedures, that it's not a question and answer, it's just a talking. But I also have to say, at the meeting that was held at the Currents, there was a citizen who wished to speak up. Other citizens had spoken up. But because some people consider this citizen a little different, they shut him off. And the time that you spent, Mark, trying to shut John down, and Anita too, you could have let him speak and say his two minutes, three minutes, and it would have been out. And to be honest with you, y'all really are missing an opportunity. We're looking at that gateway, and I'm not going to say we're disnifying it, but if you can tie Poseidon to Tarpon Springs in mythology and archaeological things, you've got your natural ecotourism. Things you can build on instead of cutting people off. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Thank you. We are now going to the presentation, item number four, which is the Tarpon Shores Women's Club.
Good evening to all. My name is Judy Demko. I live at 51 Drury in Tarpon Shores Mobile Home Park. On February the 9th, our women's club hosted a soup and chili cook-off. It was very well attended. And the money that we raised from that event, we decided again to approach Queen's Pizza in Tarpon Springs. That family is a very, very generous family. And for the last three years, they have matched any funds that we made. So our small group raised $500. In turn, Tarpon Springs, Tarpon Springs Queens matched our $500 again for the third consecutive year. So we are very, very thankful to our police department. We can't thank you enough. We can't thank our fire department enough. You are there for our senior residents. Anytime someone falls or needs assistance, you are right there. And it's convenient because you're very close to our Tarpon Shores. So as a way of saying thank you, also too, I want to add that our mayor even attended our event and everybody was happy about that, our residents. So without further ado, I would like to present our police chief, Mr. Koch, a pizza gift card for $500. And use it as appropriate with your staff. And also too, to fire chief Scott Young, I don't know if he's here tonight. He is. Thank you again for all your help and I'll present this with you and thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Fire chief, go close.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate you on a successful fundraiser. It was fun. We all enjoyed it. And I would like to thank the Tarpon Shores Women's Club as well as the Queen's Pizza for the support and the contribution to our police and fire department. Thank you so much. Nico, you want to say something? No, no, please do. Thank you.
Before you guys leave, I am representing Queen's Pizza tonight. I'm representing my parents, Nicholas Atanasatos, 451 Silver Moss Lane. And we would just like to say this is something that we're really glad we were asked to do. And something that we love giving to is back to the community. And we'd like to thank our police department and our fire department. We'd like to thank you guys for all the work you do here in Tarpon Springs and that we know you will continue to do. So again, thank you guys, everyone, for recognizing this.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Thank you. We are now going to item number five is to authorize Long and Associates for Phase Two Design City Clerk's Building Renovation. Staffing, please. Thank you.
Waiting for my cue from the boss, but good, okay. Well, good evening, I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. And suddenly craving pizza, that was, that was good. This item pertains to restoration or replacement of the City Clerk's Office Building located here on the City Hall campus. This is an action item for the board. In August of last year, the board authorized staff to hire architectural firm Long and Associates Incorporated to conduct a condition assessment of the Clerk's Office Building and to provide an alternatives analysis for us. Two of the architects are here tonight to help me answer questions if, if needed. That analysis, which we called Phase One, is completed and resulted in three options for consideration that I'll briefly summarize for you. So the existing building was constructed in about 1952, at least according to property appraisers' records. It has a long list of needs. And I'll spare you the long list, but to summarize them, it needs renovation and repairs such as roof replacement, mold treatment, and ADA accessibility improvements to make it safer and more accessible for staff and for customers. The architect's analysis presented three primary options to address these issues with conceptual cost estimates for comparison purposes. And just to note, these aren't bid prices that you have in front of you. These are budget level estimates so that we compare each option against the others to help us make a decision. Option one is to renovate the existing building to make those necessary improvements. This would require staff to move out of the building into temporary facilities during the renovations. The architect's opinion of total cost of design and construction is about $790,000. Option two is to demolish the existing building and rebuild a new, slightly larger building in the same location. This would also require staff to move out of the building into temporary facilities during construction. And the architect's opinion of total cost of design and construction is just over $1 million for option two. And then option three is to construct a new building nearby on City Hall property, then demolish the old building after taking occupancy of the new one. This would not require staff to move out of the existing building during construction. The architect's opinion of total cost of design and construction is just over $1.1 million for option three. So tonight, what we're asking the board, we're asking the board for your recommendation on one of these three options. And we're asking for approval to move forward with negotiating the scope and fee for the design of the selected option. And final approval of that contract change would come to you for approval after I've got that negotiated and locked in. So I will stop there for questions. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. The City Clerk's Office is interfacing with more residents and other local departments, other local governments than any other department that we have in the city. But the building is, and all buildings, the old cafeteria, I'm sure Mr. Anita remembers that. Huh? But anyway, the building is in a bad shape. It needs to be, it needs to be replaced. You have mentioned that we have three, three options. And the first option is to rebuild the old building. And we're still going to have an old building. If we do that, it's going to cost us close to $100,000. And the City Clerk's operation has to be relocated during the construction. The option two is to replace the existing building, the old building, with a new building. That's going to cost $1 million. And the City Clerk's office has to be relocated to another place during the construction. The option three is to replace the old building to a new location, right next to where it is, where it is right now. And the cost is 1.1 million. So really, it's not much difference when it comes to the cost of all three options. What I like option three better is that we're going to have a new building plus the City Clerk's operation does not have to be, it doesn't have to relocate during the construction. It's going to be easier for the residents, going to be easier for, for the employees. And I think it's the other way to go. So my choice is third option. Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Seaver?
I agree with you, Mayor. I feel that it would be a disruption to the service, the services for the city trying to figure out where the City Clerk's Office has been located and it could create some chaos. I also feel like we need parking in that area and that's going to include redoing that parking lot, which, which I feel we need. So rather than disrupt the services and, and having, you know, them moved to somewhere where it has to be secure because that, that is also involved, I prefer for them to, to relocate to another building, a new building.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first I just want to thank the Clerk's Office for all the work they do. You guys wear a lot of hats, you have a lot of expectations, a lot of people, some happy, some not so happy. And you manage to deal with them all. So thank you guys for all the work that you do. I did have a few questions for you, Bob, just regarding the project in general. So what year was that building actually built?
So our best estimate is 1952. That's what the property appraiser notes and I did find drawings that go back to that date. I wasn't around then.
Okay. And then what, what would the age of the current roof and air conditioning be?
So I talked to the Public Works Director, Tom Funchen. It seems that the, the roof was last rebuilt in the 90s and it's been patched and repaired many, many times since then. And the, you asked about the AC unit as well?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, there, there are three units there. One was replaced in 2018. The other two go back to 1998. So they've reached the end of their useful life.
And then just to provide a little bit more background on it, it's my understanding that this all began when we were looking to do an ADA compliant door. And then that inspector, that operation kind of stemmed, they looked around, they were like, okay, this building is way out of code. Can you give a little more detail on that?
Yeah, and that was part of the start of it. Irene and Michelle provided a lot of input in moving this project forward. But that was one of their primary concerns is that the, the current configuration is very difficult for ADA access, not just for customers, but also for staff if we were to hire someone that would need access. And also parking configuration is tough. So that was where it started. But, you know, when, when we look at those things, you look at all the other needs of the building and it becomes a, a much bigger project. If you're going to fix something, you should fix everything.
So this, I, I think is a big question, at least for me in making this decision, is if we go with option one and we make all the repairs to the building and the insides, all the guts kind of, kind of new versus actually rebuilding the building, what's the life expectancy comparison for the building? So obviously you got a brand new building versus the updates and renovations that it needs right now.
Yeah, so renovating the existing building probably buys us about 20 years. And a, a new building could give you a service life of 50-plus.
Thank you. And what is the current plan in place that we have to look after our buildings? So growing up in Tarpon Springs, there's plenty of buildings and homes that are built pre, you know, 1950s. And I understand that this building has been patched up, there's been a lot of repairs. But usually what hits a building is, hey, we got a bad roof, so we'll replace the roof. We got a bad AC unit, we'll replace the AC unit, we'll make the fixes that are necessary. But this is kind of like a, a total disaster of a building right now in terms of, you know, the flooding, the leaking. It kind of all hit and I, I know it didn't all just happen at once. So what's our plan in place right now that we have to look after our buildings, both historic and nonhistoric? And just make sure that, hey, we don't have any mold problems, we don't have any cracks in the foundation or anything like that. Do we have a plan?
Well, as it works right now, the Building Maintenance Division and Public Works Department, they do inspections and repairs on an as, as needed basis for the facilities in the city. But what we're working on now, my department and the Public Works Department have teamed up. We're, we're about 50% way through of doing a citywide building assessment so that we can create more of a, a long-term capital plan. We're looking at capital improvements, not maintenance stuff, but the, the large ticket items so that we can try to better budget and plan out our needs a little bit more precisely going into the future.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to what that, that plan yields. Because I think, you know, it's frustrating that building in 1950, now we're sitting here. You know, I, I think it still could have been well within its life. It was being properly inspected and we were catching all these things early. And now we're going to spend, you know, nearly a million or over a million to fix it. So that's just frustrating to me is that, you know, all this stuff didn't happen at once. It's something that happened over time. And even though there are reports of it and we were putting kind of Band-Aids on it, that it all just kind of culminated to this where now we have to spend a million dollars on a new building. The two specific enhancements listed that I just would like to keep a, a close eye on personally is the upgraded kitchen portion and the enhanced security. Those are both things where I think, you know, sometimes spending can be a bit frivolous. So like the upgraded kitchen, obviously. So, like, the upgraded kitchen, obviously, won't, what's best for our employees, but if I walk in there and it's like imported granite, I'm going to be frustrated with that. And then, for the enhanced security stuff, I know we may not be able to discuss it in detail, but that's just something I'd like to keep a, a close eye on, especially when it comes to costs, and I understand that we're not there yet. But any enhanced security in, in any of our buildings, I'd like to keep a close eye on, just given the nature of how expensive that can be.
Understood.
From my, from my perspective on it, I'd like to opt in two, which is to replace the existing building in the same location. I understand that it's going to cause an inconvenience for the short term, just given that, you know, it may have to be portables, they may have to relocate while the building's being constructed. But I think the differences between, you know, $1 million and $18,000, $1,018,000 or $1,127,000, so that's over $100,000, just kind of for the, the short-term convenience. And I understand there's some more parking things that go in with that. But again, I, I think the $100,000, little over that difference is enough for me to go with Option Two. But I'm also up to discussion for the board.
Vice Mayor Tarpan?
Thank you. Thanks, Bob, for coming before us tonight with this presentation. I have a couple of questions as well. I do think it's important to first note the additions of public restrooms in the Clerk's Office, which is required by code, the addition or reconfiguration of a public meeting space, and then obviously some of the enhanced security features, which I think unfortunately in this day and age are necessary, especially, you know, in a situation where we're exchanging money. So, it is noted in a couple of places, some expense as it relates to design and permitting. And I'm, I'm curious as to what the expense could be for permitting, when we're basically going to permit it ourselves, with exception to the other governmental agencies. So, I'm curious what other agencies it would go before for per, for permitting, and if you had a better idea of what some of the costs associated with the permitting are.
I'll have our architect address that one.
Hi, my name is Travis Steve with Long and Associates. Other permitting agencies would be such as the Water Management District, and that's going to be something that's going to be dependent on the option that's selected. If it's something that's, anything that's going to be increasing impervious area on the site is going to, going to involve addressing drainage and other issues like that with them. Otherwise, I'm not...
The permitting is going to be a small piece.
Right, right, very small, yeah, a small piece.
So, for me, I, it would be helpful for me to see, in this line item, you have design and permitting, what the actual expense associated with design is, and then what the expense associated with permitting is, because, you know, as it, as it reads, it's $130,000 or $169,000 or whatever, and if there's no permitting expense, I don't even know why that would be listed.
Right, and, and to be fair, this is an estimate at this point. I will be coming back to you to approve a change order with the contract with them for Phase Two, and I will do what you're asking and break it out with design and permitting shown. So, that, that's easy to do.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
And then, for clarity, this is a presentation tonight, not necessarily an action, so are we given preference, or?
Yeah, I'm going to need your guidance on which option to start working with. First approval that I can, that I can move forward, and Mark can tell me if it's different. But that's what I was hoping to get out of this meeting, is a, and the preference of which option the board wants me to move forward with negotiating with the architect for.
I just want to commit to, I mean, we can commit to a concept, I feel like, but the actual price, for me, it's always hard to go backwards, it's usually the price goes up, not goes down.
Yes, that's what he's talking about, coming back to you.
Okay. And then, on a couple of the options, if the option is, if we're either renovating or if we're relocating, you have in your backup that some of the expense factored in here is for that relocation and the possibility of a rented space?
Correct.
Do you have any estimates as it relates to that?
Yeah, we've estimated about $100,000 for each of those options to rent facilities, keep them on-site, do the move, add security, all the kinds of things that are needed.
And you envision about a, the like-kind in size for a leasable space?
Yeah, we'd have to do at least enough space to, to house the existing staff.
And then, so of, of what we're seeing here, correct me if I'm wrong, there's about, within those costs, about $100,000 is for the relocation, is that right?
For, yes, for the temporary facilities, correct.
Which, which wouldn't be in Option Three.
Would not be in Option Three, correct.
And then, the building that's directly behind this building that we recently kind of fixed up a little bit, that's for record-keeping right now, is that right? Didn't we?
It's primarily for record-keeping and, and storage of materials.
And how do you see that moving forward? Do you think that that would probably be, we would still utilize that space, or we wouldn't need it?
Yeah, we've, we've envisioned probably trying to renovate it, potentially move the customer billing office, that's this narrow, skinny office right outside this building, into that building. It would still continue to be used for records retention and storage. In fact, one of the layouts we proposed, putting the, the new Clerk's Office building in Option Three facilitates the storage and records and access that the clerk continues to use now and would continue to use when the building is completed.
So, all, all the options would remain in close proximity to that space?
Yes.
Gotcha. And then, on Option Three, can you help better orient me on where Option Three would actually be?
Yeah, so, just a concept now with the design, we'll kind of narrow down where, but we're talking about potentially putting it right about, I guess, probably 200 to 250 feet to the south of the existing building. So, basically occupying space in the existing parking lot, but configuring it in such a way that we could have a, an increased volume for vehicle queue into the drive-through, which we want to retain that function. But it would be right here on this facility, on this site, creating more of a campus feel.
Understood. Let's see. Oh, and then, I'm starting to get to be a little bit of a broken record with the penny, but is there any other funding source that we could draw from? I'm happy to see that there's the sewer impact, the water impact, and the water sewer, non-departamental, and we're pulling 25% from each, but is there another option for that remaining 25%?
I don't know. That's a little bit outside of my realm.
I don't think so, but... I mean, whether or not there's money in there is one thing, but is there another department that, in theory, we could, we could draw from?
Those are the three that you mentioned.
Right.
The three departments, which takes the load off the...
So, there's not a, there's not another facilities fund, nothing? So, for me, you know, I definitely see the value in having a new facility, especially as it relates to just a little, you know, not a little bit more money, but as a percentage, it's a little bit more money. I happen to like the location in which the building's in now, so I don't see too much value in, in moving it other than, I mean, moving the location other than the monies that we would save on relocation and temporary structure, rent, et cetera. So, I think it's important to consider that $100,000 number that you mentioned roughly. So, I'm, I'm leaning towards Two, but before I commit to any, like, true dollar figure, I definitely would like to see some more line items as it relates to the expense, and then go from there.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, thank you for talking to me about this before last week, and Irene, you as well. A couple of things I just want to ask and reiterate is, if the building's being rebuilt, it's currently going to add 800 additional square feet, and I think that's an important piece to touch on. One thing, too, if the city's going to be rebuilding it, Bob, this is one thing I mentioned to you, if, I'm not sure what the additional cost would be to go up another story, but not actually build it out. So, you have the roof, you put in a floor, but then you have space to expand, if we need to expand later on for additional offices, for a different department, or something along those lines. So, you have the footprint, you've got the structure there, then you could, for future growth, you could actually build out some offices when needed in that area, or if we need to utilize it for storage, because I believe this would be up to at least a category three hurricane. I'm not really sure what the current storage facility would hold today if we had a hurricane. But I want to reiterate about, what you talked about is Option Two and Option Three. The way they sit today, there's $100,000 difference. And then, you mentioned that there'd be $100,000 built into Option Two for relocation, et cetera. So, technically, that's $200,000 we're looking at in building difference, right? And we're building basically the same building. So, can you help me understand why there's $200,000 in additional building cost between Option Two and Option Three, or if the architect could share on that for me, please?
Yeah, I, I think they could add to that, but I'll, I'll start with, from what you get when you're building in a new location is some unknowns. You also have more utilities to relocate, there's costs associated with that. Is there anything I'm missing related to that, or was there other items that could contribute to that?
Some electrical, site unknown, site unknown.
Yeah, electrical relocation, that kind of thing, and then site unknowns. There, there may be unknowns that we have to just account, account for in this level of an estimate for our cost. Once we get into full design, I, I fully anticipate those prices to come down, but these are high-budget level-type costs with big contingencies to, to give us a feel for where they fall.
Okay, thanks. Ultimately, with the useful life, it makes more sense to rebuild, in my opinion. I'm not, I would say either Option Two or Option Three, one of those two. I think I would have to see some numbers at the end of the day. I, I would really like to see the design breakout on what the cost is for actually designing this project, and then what a true cost of construction is, because on one, we're looking at $339 per square foot, and on the other one, it's $375 per square foot. So, I'm not sure what the going rate is for commercial, but it would be good to know what that is when we go to make a decision to finalize this. And then... Mayor, thank you.
So, it wasn't clear, which, which one did you prefer?
Option Two or Three?
Huh?
Option Two and Three.
Okay, so, two and a half?
Two and a half works.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, just to touch on one last time about the, the relocation. You know, in a perfect world, Bob, it would be nice to relocate into a facility that we own, to try and save some costs and not pay rent. I don't know where that would be exactly, but I know that we have some buildings that we could probably take advantage of, the utility and buildings that we already own. So, I would just ask, you know, if the commission decides to go with an option in which we would not have the facility to still operate out of while there was being one rebuilt, that you just, you know, try and be smart about the location in terms of that expense.
Sure.
I, I'd like to ask our City Clerk, Ms. Jacobs, if she wants to comment on that.
Well, it's the board's ultimate decision.
Of course.
As you said, the Clerk's Office is the most viewed office, and I'd like to thank the board for looking into addressing these existing conditions that we have. I personally have discussed the issue with Mr. Robinson at length and Mr. Powell, who is our Development Services Director, and, like I said, anything is appreciated. However, I personally am leaning towards Option Three, and only for these reasons that are my concerns. And the first reason has to do with if we did Option One or Two, it would inconvenience our customers for, I'm told that construction can take up to a year, and they wouldn't have that, you know, using the drive-through, because we do have a lot that use the drive-through window. Secondly, if we are relocated in Option One or Two, my concern is security and how that would work. And thirdly, there again, because of the cost, that it's, I feel it's more feasible to move us once, because not only are you moving the staff, in what we have now housed in the Clerk's Office are, are items that aren't scanned, such as microfilm and file cabinets, the cemetery records that we use on a daily basis, that would have to move with us as well for that time period. But, but like I said, I, I thank the board for looking at these existing conditions. I know some of y'all have witnessed some of them, and we need to get those taken care of for our residents.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, and those were my concerns, too, is inconveniencing, inconveniencing our, our residents and disrupting the whole service that we have. And it was mentioned, we could use a portable, but, you know, it's security, I, I think, is, for a portable is, is, is nonexistent. So, I do have to think about where we move and where we rent, and what building we would have to use that it has security that the Clerk's Office needs. So, again, I, I like Option Three.
Yeah. And again, I like Option Three, too, just for the purpose of, don't have to relocate just the one time when the building's completed, not to disturb any of the, the operation, any of the business that goes on every day. Also, I don't know if that was mentioned, that also the, the access on the drive-through is going to be improved, because we're going to have more space there for the cars, don't have to be waiting out on, on the Ring Avenue on the street, so it'll be safer for them, too. Mr. Lee Curtis, do you like to comment?
Yes. Only things I can say, and being around other cities that have tried this, the working from a satellite place is a nightmare. It is going to be a nightmare for a year. I can guarantee you, it's probably going to be well worth the money for the nightmare it's going to cause to try to work out of there. But the other situation that I know we can't see by the pictures, and then you, you look at, the ability to take that space where the Clerk's Office now and put handicap parking and some addition, some landscaping and parking during that closer to the building, so they can get to the ramp, so they can get in people who are doing City Hall business, I think that's an attribute that has to be considered, too. Along with, one of the main things, the drive-through and the ability to have that straight in and out, as opposed to the loop and the circle, I think, I think the drive-through is going to be a lot better with that building in the middle. And then, I think what we can do with the parking and the, and some additional handicap to get to the ramp, to get into City Hall, I think that improvement needs to be considered, but the biggest consideration is the other nightmare for your city staff in the Clerk's Office and the citizens for that, that year of displacement. I just think it's going to be an, no matter how big of a portable building or what we bring in, it's just going to be an absolute nightmare. So, that's one of the things I would have you consider in that.
Commissioner Donovan, you had another question or comment?
Um, yeah, I was, I was just going to say that I, I think the savings on Option Two are worthwhile, and I was just going to see if we could go down the line and just see kind of what the consensus is, because I'm still on, I'm still on Option Two, so...
Your Option Two. Well, Vice Mayor Tarpan wants you to comment, and then I can tell you, I've been marking that down.
Go with me.
I just have a brief comment in terms of the move. So, this might be a little bit far-fetched, but in terms of, like, receivable monies, somebody's paying their, their water bill, right, in terms of the disruption and, like, our collections and things of that nature. Has anybody looked at the dollars and cents behind that in terms of, like, you know, if we collect a million dollars a month, right, and then we utilize that million dollars for X, Y, and Z, well, if the move is so disruptive that instead of collecting a million, we collect a half a million, and then we're in arrears, and has anybody looked at, like, what that might do to our financial status?
I don't think so.
Okay. I mean, because that's the biggest part of, I mean, there's the disruption in the employees and the residents, but when it gets to, like, actually receiving the money, right, then that becomes a little bit bigger issue. So, I could potentially be swayed for Three in terms of the move.
Mayor?
Just go ahead.
Mr. Robertson wants an answer on which way to go.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we go with Number Three. Oh, he's telling somebody else, say?
Yeah, just a second, because I want to say how everybody feels about it, and then we're going to go to the public comments before we go to motion. Right now, myself, Commissioner Seaver, and Vice Mayor Tarpan prefer Option Three. Commissioner Carr is between Two, Option Two and, and Option Three, and Commissioner Donovan is Option Two. We want to go to the public comments on that now. We'll come back to that, and make a motion.
Costa, Costa Valley, Kyoto's 538 West Cedar Street, Tarpon Springs. I went through the three options as well, and I just had a couple of points I wanted to make. I think the construction timetable, I think the city manager alluded to it, it's going to take about a year from breaking ground until completion, and that's given that there aren't any delays. And then also, the design timeframe, if I'm not mistaken, is about six months, is that correct? So, about a year and a half or so, maybe a little longer, I don't know, but basically, and that's from the time this comes back to you for bids, so you're going to be bumping up against the next election, and that's going to require the city man, City Clerk to be very, very busy at that time. The other thing I want to do... The other thing I want to do, and also as far as the orientation of the building, I think which would be, option three would give more flexibility. It's the stacking or the queuing of the vehicles. Sometimes there's a backup up on Ring Avenue and getting in and things. That would certainly improve that as well. And then lastly, as far as the fees, I assume that this would be by the AIA fee schedule? Is that correct? For the design and engineering of the new building. Would you follow the AIA? Is that, would you suspect or no?
Yeah, there's a, the DMS fee curve is typically what we.
Yeah, generally for this type of building, it'd be about eight percent of the cost of construction for the design, the architectural part of it, and about eight percent for the engineering. And if you go do the math, it comes out to about $160,000. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Commissioner Seber, you wanted to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item three, so Mr. Robertson can have his answer tonight.
This is a presentation, right? Do we make motions on presentations?
It is a presentation. But also we want to give it a direction on which I.
They'd ask our city attorney.
If, I mean, do we have an, we don't really know what the true costs are going to be for the two options. So is it, these are just estimates that are proposed. Bob, is this an area that you could come back with a more firm number for two of them to make a decision at that point?
Well, I could.
It seems like the board wants to rebuild based on everyone's comment, but it's just not sure what the, what the true costs are going to be. If it's really $500,000 to rebuild elsewhere or if it's going to be actually cheaper to rebuild over another site, so, for breakevens even.
Well, the reason I'm asking for your guidance is because, and selection of an option is because if we were to start on design on one and try to do two designs at the same time, we're going to have to pay the architect to do that for that time. We can do that and we can do that at an early stage, get an alternatives analysis and get more refined numbers on option two and three. But it's really better, cost, more cost effective if we can pick an option and go with it. If you're not comfortable with that, we can, we can work around it, but that would really be the way that I'd prefer to have it go.
Vice Mayor? Bob, you see these numbers coming down, you said a couple of times?
I think so, yeah. I mean, these are high-end cost estimates. They have a lot of contingency built in. You know, it's, we're going to refine those numbers with, with design, once we get into the design.
I mean, I don't think it's any debate that we all want the clerk's office to be state-of-the-art. And obviously, there's a lot of attention there with the amount of residents that come through and exchange money. I see value to number three, although it is more money. I mean, ultimately, from an intangible benefit standpoint for the clerks not to have to move going into an election, et cetera, you know, that's, that's probably worth the difference in my opinion in cost.
Looking for a second.
A second.
Roll call please.
No.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have a very, very long agenda, so we want to take a little break. We'll be right back. Thank you.
Please take your seat so we can start.
That's right.
Can I plug that? Does that plug in?
Uh, no.
We now reconvene the BOC meeting at eight oh seven PM. The next item on the agenda is item number six, grant update, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. In your backup, I've attached a list, the latest update to a grants tracking spreadsheet that I and my staff created with the city manager's direction. Information gets updated to this spreadsheet in several ways. It's outdated, it's, excuse me, it's updated roughly quarterly by my staff who reach out to each department individually to check in on the status of active grants and upcoming grants. The city manager also hosts a grant review meeting, also roughly quarterly with staff for the same purpose. And one of our consultants, Cardno, has a grants writer on staff that provides quarterly written updates on upcoming grants that may interest the city customized based on their knowledge of city projects and city interests. This spreadsheet that's included in your backup is posted on the city's project page of the city website at ctsfl.us/projects.hdm or by Googling Tarpon Springs Citywide Grants, and it should be the first link you see. While I'm not the subject matter expert on many of these grants, I'm familiar with many of them, so I'd be glad to try to answer your questions about any of the specific grants that I can. Some of the department heads are here tonight that may be able to help as well. So with that, I'll stop for questions you may have about the process or any specific grants on the list.
Mr. Robertson, thank you, and also want to thank you for having that information on the, on the website, and it's available to everyone, it's always updated. Couple of things that I'd like to point out is, we have grants, the item number seven, the fire department that is receiving $692,000. I know that fire chief is here, can you tell us a little bit about that, because I think it's good for people to know? Because it's for personnel, staffing, needs, and overtime.
Scott Young, Fire Chief. The Safer Grant is the, we're in our third year of the grant. That grant offered us to be able, the ability to put on four additional firefighters. The first year, it paid seventy-five percent, second year paid seventy-five percent, this year, it pays thirty-five percent of the salary and benefits of the firefighters, so we're entering the last year of that. After that, the city will fund the total cost of those firefighters moving forward.
Thank you, I think it's, it's good. Anybody has any question on that, or?
No, not on that one. Not on that specific one.
Not on that one, okay. I want to thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, the audience and the people at home, they realize, they understand about this beneficial, how beneficial this grant is.
It's been a great benefit to the department.
Yeah. Also like to point out that the Public Works is receiving. One, two, three, four. The Public Works is receiving five grants from the Swift Mud, which is item number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-one.
Correct. Those are for major stormwater projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have actually, one we just received back was a GIS matching grant for $100,000 from Swift Mud, and that was for locating our stormwater system, getting it on electronic mapping. Other grants we have set to start fairly soon is, of course, is one of the projects we have on tonight's agenda, which is the Palma Avenue. That's about a $249,000, about $250,000 grant. Those grants will actually start kicking in as soon as we put shovels in the ground, we'll get some of that money back.
This is about the future grants you're talking about?
Excuse me?
This is the future grant, or a grant that we already got?
Those are, those are current grants.
The current grants.
Okay.
There are current grants, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then the last one, of course, is the, is the project on Gross Avenue over here, the stormwater project, and that's approximately about $1.4 million. Again, as we'll start receiving those funds once shovels are in the ground.
Yeah, that goes back into the flooding that we talked about earlier, thank you, Tom. Another, another grant that I'd like to point out is number twenty-eight, which is the project administrator from the FDOT. This is the roadway on Tarpon Avenue by Walmart. This is something that we've been working on for a long time. I know Chief and Mr. Markley who are working on that for a long time. You have something you want to tell us about that?
Sure, yeah, I'm excited about this one. This is, do the roadway safety improvements on Tarpon Avenue between, about Huey and US-19, and that one is currently under design with one of our engineer records. The, we have a grant from the DOT of $750,000 for the construction phase, so once we get to that point, we'll be able to take advantage of that grant. This is looking at reconfiguring the roadway, I think the, probably the highlight of that project is reconfiguring the intersection at the Publix and Walmart intersection there, so that we have better sightlines and turning lanes and turning arrows that don't, that are not there now.
Yeah, Mr. Licker, is something you've been working on for a long time, you want to comment on that?
No, it's been a long time, and I'd be glad to see it, we really need it.
Yeah, vice mayor, too, I think.
Well, I was just going to ask, that's something that's been on my radar with the Ford Pinellas, and I'm just curious, as to, I know that there was some, a little bit of discussion about the timetable there, I'm just curious what your knowledge on that is, Bob.
Can you tell us which that is?
The same item you're talking about, Mayor, number twenty-eight.
Yeah, so we're, we're targeting getting a design done by the summer, so that we can take advantage of the DOT's schedule. I think we're supposed to have it started by fiscal twenty twenty-one for construction.
Twenty twenty-one?
Right, in fiscal twenty twenty-one.
I had a couple others.
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
So on the number sixteen, where we're talking about the GIS mapping, I think that's a good thing. I've had some recent conversations with staff regarding some GIS mapping in our urban core to be able to, you know, have more readily available answers as it relates to infrastructure. So I'm just curious if we might be able to piggyback on that with some of the GIS mapping and include some water and sewer lines and not just the stormwater? I mean, I know that it's a Swift Mud grant, so it deals with stormwater, but, you know, we're going to be out there in theory probing around, so it might be beneficial to try and look at, piggybacking on that in some areas of town, just food for thought.
Head on that one. Water and sewer, we're way ahead, storms are catching up, but water and sewer have been actively doing mapping and GIS mapping and updating for several years.
Yeah, I knew that we were, I thought, I thought we were. But I think it's a good thing, especially at the rate in which we're trying to.
Our system gets better every day, our GIS department is phenomenal.
That's great, that's good to hear. And then twenty-one, I know that at a, twenty-one is, as it relates to water expansion projects for reclaimed water? And I know that in some update maybe from Paul Smith, I want to say we're basically reaching our capacity as it relates to reclaimed water, is that right? So how does that have an effect on this? This, these calculations are already been put into place, and we have enough capacity for those neighborhoods?
Yeah, this project you're pointing out in particular is one that we've recently completed, West Winds and Grassley Point. It's only in here because we were waiting on our final reimbursement from.
So it's done?
The Water Management District, it's done.
Congrats.
Yep, thank you.
It's a good thing. And then the thirty-three, the, another Ford Pinellas Complete Streets Program, and that's funding for multimodal street construction or upgraded projects that provide transformative change. So that's $100,000 for planning and a million for construction, and I see that we, do we have an area of town in which we'd like to try and take advantage of that grant?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. I think one of the, the difficulties with that one is it requires the city to be LAP certified, and we are not LAP certified as, as a city. We went for and are getting our LAP certification for a single project, and that being the Tarpon Avenue DOT project. But the, the LAP certification process is pretty extensive for the citywide. We could do it, we just haven't done it, so we have to, we'd have to go through that step.
How long is that certification good for?
How long is it good for? I think it's a, I think it's a three-year certification.
So you're saying we're already trying to get certified for that project, for the Tarpon Avenue project? In which case, the certification would be good for another one?
No, that's single project only, right. It's a much broader application process when you go for citywide.
Do we have any idea, like, expense associated with that certification, or how do we go about that? I'm unfamiliar.
Well, we've spent about $20,000 with a consultant to help us get LAP certified for that single project. It is really extensive, I don't, I don't have an idea what it would be to do a citywide certification.
But we're going to look at it for a future budget, because it's essential.
Yeah, I mean, a million bucks, right.
Can I just touch on that real quick?
Sure.
Do you mind? I, I would even say we should, as a city, go out and hire somebody that's already LAP certified, and then at that point, the city doesn't have to go and do LAP certification. If you could justify applying almost for $3 million with the grants, I mean, an $80,000 salary or whatever, I don't know what that, that would fall, seems to be well worth it if you could get a million-dollar grant for that position. So I think it might be best, instead of trying to do something internally, if it takes six months to, or a year and a half to get LAP certified, to actually go out and hire someone in the, in the engineering department, and you could leverage that also with our current outsourcing of, for engineering services, too, so maybe it could be a win-win across the board.
I support that. I mean, I think it's conceptual anyways. That's all I had, Mayor, I just, to the, to the point of the Ford Pinellas, that grant that's out there, and we don't have the certification, I would just put on the board's radar the possibility of a, of a traffic light, a full, fully signalized light in front of the hospital and the golf course. I think that that's something that's probably going to be a need in the near future, so if we could.
They really need that.
Yeah, we need it like today. But if we could get somebody to help us pay for it, that would be obviously preferred. I'm good, thank you.
Commission call.
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, thank you for keeping track of this. If I could, Mark, ask that we add a couple columns, just to say where current grants are, that if it's a completed project, that we have completed date, and if we have a received date and when the grant was received, that would just help us, I think, from a clarification of where we're at in the projects. I know there's an application date on future grants, so it's great to see. There's a couple of things I'd just like to talk about real quick, is the future grants, it has an item that talks about the state appropriations for the dredge project, and it's the turn basin for the dredging. I'm sorry, let me take a step back. So the total grant amounts that it looks like the city's received, I'm not sure what the timeframe is of this, but it's $4.6 million, and I really want to commend the city, staff, and everyone within the city, that this is a significant amount of money overall, and so I just want to say thank you for putting resources behind this, because these are tax dollars that are pulled in from other parts of the state that would be going to other cities, and that we're able to use the bucket of funds from the city of residents on other projects that we can move forward with. So we're able to move some of these projects up to have them completed sooner and quicker by receiving these grants, so I just want to say thank you to do, for doing this, and also for Commissioner Donovan for bringing this to light and having a tracking system on this once you were elected, so. Coming back, though, to appropriations, there's one listed here, and I think there's one that's missing as well. The one that's listed is support of the Ankle dredging project extended turning basin for 812,000, and that was an appropriation that was submitted to the state of Florida, and there is one other appropriation request that was submitted for this fiscal year to the state of Florida, and it had to do with the turnbait, I'm sorry, the Sponge Docks abatement project, which addresses the flooding in the Sponge Docks, and that was $1.7 million that was submitted to the state. And I just want to touch on the importance of these items, is that it helps these projects move at a faster pace. I had the chance to sit down with our representative, our state representative, and also our state senator, to, to request these items, and they said, submit the appropriations request, and we'll see what they, how far we get with this year's budget. So tracking these, it looks like there's, we're tracking well with these for the city of Tarpon Springs. Also, I want to touch, too, is that that was on my own time to meet with these individuals, and I've also spent money, my own dollars, to go to Washington DC and lobby for these same aspects as well, too. So it's important that we all, as commissioners, do this lobbying in aspect from our state officials and federal officials for these dollars, because it helps the city of Tarpon Springs extend the dollar so much further. But from estate appropriations, I wanted to touch base on that, Mark, I know we talked about this via email, and you said we should at least put an agenda item on there, but I just want to talk about a few items that I've seen in appropriations requests by other cities. So some of these items are things that we could do with our city, one would be the new, a new rebuild of Fire Station Seventy, another one would be septic to sewer and residential assistance, so it would be like a grants for assistance to hook up the sewer, and these are all items that you've seen by other cities apply for state funds in the state budget. Let's see, road flood prevention and improvements with all the low-lying areas, there's a significant amount of money that the state is putting aside for the rising tides. Hospital capital improvements, if there's an opportunity there to partner with our hospital, since it's a city-owned property. Recreation trail to add around the bayous, out to the beaches. Bayou dredging, which doesn't include the, the channel, this is outside of the channel. Stormwater improvements, new wells for the RO plants, and alternatives for the old city dump-off mirrors. So I'm really satisfied to see all these grants applied for, but I think as a city, we could, we should really put a game plan together on appropriations requests over the next few years, and making sure that we're asking for as much as we can that's respectable to the state and utilizing those state dollars as well. That's it, thank you.
Commission Seaver.
No comments.
Commission Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank Bob and staff for putting together the, this list of our current grants, our future grants. I think this is one of the better things we do as far as transparency goes, so that the public can reach out and see exactly where we're at, and how much money we're getting, the matching money we're getting. I think it's a really useful tool. I did have a question on a couple of the future grants, so number twenty-nine on our, and the numbers are all the way there on the left, number twenty-nine for the fire department, it says grant for purchase of personal protection equipment bunker gear, and I think our, our matching is only $12,000, but I was just curious as to what bunker gear was.
Bunker gear that we're getting, writing a grant for is the gear that you see the firefighters wear when they go inside the fire. That includes the helmet, the gloves, the jacket, pants, and boots. NFPA eighteen fifty-one requires that the gear be retired after ten years. Our gear is coming up to that point. We also provide a second set of gear, now with the cancer presumption bills out there, that when they exit a fire, they have to go through a decontamination process, so it takes some time to be washed and cleaned, so they have a second set to go into, be ready for the next call. So we are trying to get that grant, it is a ten percent matching grant, I believe, through FEMA.
Yeah, it's, it's for a lot of money, I really hope we get it, it's awesome.
Thanks.
I also had a question on number thirty-two, the marketing future grant, for the grant agency being Visit Florida Marketing Programs, then most of the other stuff is unknown. I was just curious as to what this grant would be used for, is it going to be commercials? Is it going to be billboards?
Thank you, yes. That is Visit Florida, which is the, the state's marketing arm, and we're a partner with them. So that really isn't a grant through them, those are marketing cooperative programs. So when Visit Florida is going out and doing commercials, or if they're putting in print ads, and they do worldwide, because they're trying to get people into the state, they offer to their partners an opportunity to take advantage of what they're doing. So they might offer us a discount in, if we want to put an ad in something, or if we want to do a television commercial, because they're doing one, it's a co-op program, so it's, and a lot of them have minimum amounts that you have to spend. You know, we'd have to spend like $10,000 or $5,000 or whatever. We did use that for the Explore Tarpon Springs video. So they have a, a video company that they use, so they offer to their partner cities an ability to do marketing videos for a less expensive amount. And those come up whenever, you know, Visit Florida went through a tough time during the legislative session, so they've had some, some budget cuts. So those come up from time to time.
Okay, is this all stuff that we would see, like, before we, before using those dollars, we would see that, it would come before the board?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's all I have for the marketing one. My last one is just on number thirty-seven, the forestry program. Can you give me a little bit more detail on that? It says enhancement of urban and community forestry programs.
Sure. That one is, it's part of the US Forest Service and, Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Matching Grant Program. It's a fifty-fifty grant to local governments for replacement of urban canopy due to storms, public tree inventory or assessments, community storm preparedness planning, and information and education for storm preparedness, primarily related to storm issues.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Yeah, no, thank you, Bob, and the next years, projects update.
Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. So we do many things in the Project Administration Department, but first and foremost is, of course, managing projects. To do that, my staff and I meet weekly to discuss each of the projects that we're managing, and we update the attached spreadsheet from your backup, which gets posted to the city website. You can find that, anyone can find that by browsing to the projects page on the city website at ctsfl.us/projects.hdm, or by simply Googling Tarpon Springs Projects, and it should be the first link that comes up on that Google search. We've been publishing this update to the city website since 2017, shortly after my department was created. There are currently thirty-seven projects on your list in varying stages of completion. Recently, I've started sorting the list, so that projects that seem to generate a lot of interest and questions are shown on the first page of that list. And my department doesn't manage every project in the city, so we don't track them all, but we do try to keep up with most of the projects in case our help is needed. And if you know of a project that isn't currently on the list, but you'd like to have it on there and updated regularly, please let me know, invite you to do that, and we'll just add it to the list and start tracking that as well. That is a general overview of our project tracking process. If you'd like status updates on any of the specific projects in the list, I'd be happy to address those for you. Mr. Mayor?
And I want to thank you for updating the website constantly, and that was one of my requests when, a few years ago. If you give us an update, some of the projects that I think is going to be beneficial for people, for everybody to know. The first one, which is very, very important to us, the Ankle River Dredge. Can you tell us, what are we standing with that?
I sure can. So the Ankle River Dredge is actually two parallel projects, the first being the federal project, which the Army Corps is doing for us on the, the formal federal portion of the Ankle River Channel, and the second one is the Extended Turning Basin, which is an additional dredge in addition to what the Army Corps is doing as part of their project. For the Army Corps project, I participate in monthly conference calls, and I work closely with their people. They're in a permitting stage right now that looks to be completed hopefully in March, then they can put the project out to bid, and they're hoping to be able to start dredging by August this year. As far as the Extended Turning Basin goes, we're on a parallel path, we are about to submit a response for our own permitting, and we feel like we can, we're going to match the schedule, which has been our intention all along, to be able to do both dredging projects at the same time.
So we, it's not delayed when it comes to permitting, right?
At this point, no, and that timing should work out well, we hope, as Commissioner Carr mentioned, we have a, we're waiting to get news on an appropriation from the state for the funding for the Extended Turning Basin, which would then free up the monies that are locked into that right now, the city funds. So we're looking forward to that, and the time, the timing hopefully will all work out nicely. Right now, if, if everything is perfect, knock on wood, we should be, we should be dredging by the end of the year, certainly.
Yeah. It was just completed on the first committee, and it's now in the, on the second committee, so.
On the House Appropriations Review Committee?
Yes.
Yes, sir, subcommittees.
Just give us an update on the check valves down at the Sponge Docks, it says ninety percent completed. We have three check valves, it's something that I've been concerned for a long, long time. We still have one at the Marina to be placed, is that being completed?
We, yes, we have three check valves that have, that have been installed, two of them are working very well, one of them is not. We feel like it's, it's the one on Hope Street.
Which one?
We feel like that's a result of a failed pipe. It's in the, in the contractor's budget to replace that pipe as part of the project, so we're having them, we sent the request today for them to do that work, should be no extra cost to us. Unfortunately, it costs us time, but we need to make sure we get it right, so that's where we are with that one.
Do you know when that will be completed?
I don't have an estimate right now, we just put the notice out to the contractor that we need him to fix this piece. I'll have an update, and I'll put it in the spreadsheet when I know it.
Thank you. Item number four is the library roof replacement. I know they've been working on that. Do we monitor the quality of work?
Yes, we do. We're out there every day, I have my staff out there every day, and where we need it, we call in the architect and a roof expert to help us double, double our inspection. It's part of why we caught issues early on related to the underlayment, and it's part of what has delayed this project, is we weren't satisfied with the underlayment quality. It was leaking, library was having issues, so the project has gone longer than it should have, but we're getting it fixed and getting it done right.
Okay, thanks. The, the next two items, six and seven, regards to Miras Boulevard, the section on Mango Street?
I'm sorry, the section.
Mango Street?
Mango Street, yes, sir.
Which is portion of the Miras Boulevard?
Right. So that segment is the city segment, it's, the design is completed. We worked really hard with our engineer to try to reduce the cost, but it still came in higher than our budget. So what we're doing now is we're retooling that design, focusing in on the main problem of Mango Street being the flooding around North Street. We want to address that issue, and we feel like we can do a large portion of the work with in-house staff to widen the road from North Street to the east. So I'm, it's under evaluation right now, we're trying to find a way that we can keep that project going, and I think we'll find a way.
Thank you.
They're in a permitting stage right now that looks to be completed hopefully in March. Then they can put the project out to bid, and they're hoping to be able to start dredging by August this year. As far as the Extended Turning Basin goes, we're on a parallel path. We are about to submit a response for our own permitting, and we feel like we can, we're going to match the schedule, which has been our intention all along, to be able to do both dredging projects at the same time.
So we, it's not delayed when it comes to permitting, right?
At this point, no. And that timing should work out well, we hope. As Commissioner Carr mentioned, we have a, we're waiting to get news on an appropriation from the state for the funding for the Extended Turning Basin, which would then free up the monies that are locked into that right now, the city funds. So we're looking forward to that, and the time, the timing hopefully will all work out nicely. Right now, if, if everything is perfect, knock on wood, we should be, we should be dredging by the end of the year, certainly.
Yeah. It was just completed on the first committee, and it's now in the second, on the second committee, so.
On the House Appropriations Review Committee?
Yes.
Yes, sir, subcommittees.
Just give us an update on the check valves down at the Sponge Docks. It says ninety percent completed. We have three check valves. It's something that I've been concerned for a long, long time. We still have one at the Marina to be placed. Is that being completed?
We, yes, we have three check valves that have, that have been installed. Two of them are working very well. One of them is not. We feel like it's, it's the one on Hope Street.
Okay.
We feel like that's a result of a failed pipe. It's in the, in the contractor's budget to replace that pipe as part of the project, so we're having them. We sent the request today for them to do that work. Should be no extra cost to us. Unfortunately, it costs us time, but we need to make sure we get it right. So that's where we are with that one.
Do you know when that will be completed?
I don't have an estimate right now. We just put the notice out to the contractor that we need him to fix this piece. I'll have an update and I'll put it in the spreadsheet when I know it.
Thank you. Item number four is the library roof replacement. I know they've been working on that. Do we monitor the quality of work?
Yes, we do. We're out there every day. I have my staff out there every day. And where we need it, we call in the architect and a roof expert to help us double, double our inspection. It's part of why we caught issues early on related to the underlayment, and it's part of what has delayed this project, is we weren't satisfied with the underlayment quality. It was leaking. Library was having issues. So the project has gone longer than it should have, but we're getting it fixed and getting it done right.
Okay, thanks. The, the next two items, six and seven, regards to Mears Boulevard, the section on Mango Street?
I'm sorry, the section?
Mango Street?
Mango Street, yes, sir.
Which is portion of the Mears Boulevard?
Right. So that segment is the city segment. It's, the design is completed. We worked really hard with our engineer to try to reduce the cost, but it still came in higher than our budget. So what we're doing now is we're retooling that design, focusing in on the, the main problem of Mango Street, being the flooding around North Street. We want to address that issue, and we feel like we can do a large portion of the work with in-house staff to widen the road from North Street to the east. So I'm, it's under evaluation right now. We're trying to find a way that we can keep that project going, and I think we'll find a way.
Thank you. That section of the Mears Boulevard now is named Mango Street. Is that going to stay as the Mango Street, or is it going to be renamed as Mears? Do you know?
I don't know, but it would probably be a good idea to look at renaming it.
Have we talked about that at all?
Haven't discussed that yet.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, we need to do that, because it's going to raise some questions, and I think it's time to do that. And of course, Mears Boulevard, the rest of it, the one the contractor is doing. And I know they had some issues, how severe the problem is, and are they, have solved the problem or not? Do you know?
Well, they're working on that part. The EP asked them to do some additional soil borings, to do some confrontations. The contractor is working on those right now. That hasn't slowed them down too much, because they continue to work on the west side. You probably noticed that the, 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 the overgrowth has been taken down now, so you can kind of see all the way through there. And they're continuing, they're starting on the stormwater ponds and things like that now, so that one's still going.
Well, I'll stop here, because I'm sure my fellow commissioners have a lot to ask, so.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks. I don't have too much to ask about, Bob. I just want to thank you for this. I think this is a great thing in terms of a project status summary, and I'm glad to hear that it's on the city's website. It's definitely something that we should be touting and keeping in front of our residents, so they can see their tax dollars at work. One thing I'll mention is a project that's kind of conceptually been floated, and I'm glad to see that it's made it to your project list, although nothing's really been done on it, which is the Orange Street, streetscape. So I'm happy to see that that's at least on the radar and at a certain point in the near future. Maybe we can conceptually start to discuss that. And then the Ankle Road, the reconstruction, or not reconstruction, but the upgrades along Ankle Road. I think that that's also important, as we continue to see growth on the north side of the river, with some of the miscellaneous projects, the, you know, completion of the Tarpon Key, and then also the Thirty Acres that's being developed by pioneers. So I think as we continue to see growth all over town, that portion of Ankle, especially Ankle Road, is something that we need to be keeping an eye on. So I appreciate all your hard work on this, and please pass that along to your staff as well, Mr. Makris, for sure.
Thank you, I will.
Yes, I just want to thank you, Bob. As always, you're proactive, and I'm glad a lot of these projects are being worked on. I, I talked to someone in your office about also inspecting the bridge that goes over from MLK to Whitcomb, which I've had some complaints about from neighbors who say that, that bridge is shifting, and it's causing problems on other properties. So, you know, I, I talked to Mr. McCrease about that yesterday. So that is our responsibility. So I do want that looked into.
Oh, okay. I thought I missed a question.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, thank you for the update. I just want to clarify a few things. With the mango portion of the mirrors, do we have a start date for that, or we're still just trying to figure out how we're going to come up with a solution for the budget?
Still trying to figure out a solution.
And is that budgeted? Is that, are those funds already allocated, or does that need to be allocated with this next budget season?
We have funds budgeted, but they're insufficient to what the engineer's cost estimate was. So I'm trying to rework it so that I can work within our budget.
Okay. Just for clarity, also, it talks about the mirror segment, C Safford to Distin. It says a completion date is estimated at fall 2020. Does that seem accurate to you?
It still does. They're moving pretty fast out there. If I need to amend it, I will, but at this point, I'm, I have no reason to suspect otherwise.
So you think more like October, November?
I don't know.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Fall.
Okay. One thing I want to highlight, too, is number twenty-one, is the Highland Nature Park, fitness walking trails, et cetera. I know that's an area that the residents in that area have asked for some upgrades, so I'm encouraged to see this on those lists. So if we could help city manager, help push that along. As well, if there's any way we could help with some foliage along the backs of some of the houses. So if people aren't looking straight into the houses, I'm not sure if that was addressed or not. And Bob, I saw number twenty-seven, the Beckett Bridge. That's been stalled, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. I know there's some discussions about crosswalks in that area with the county, and I think that the perception that they had was that it's going to be, they're going to be installed with the construction, but since it's being stalled due to some other avenues that are being taken. Can we connect, Mark, with the county to see if we could get the crosswalks installed before the construction? Because if construction's not going to start for potentially another year, it's just, it's a poor pedestrian area, and there's a lack of safety, and they're going to be installing a couple of crosswalks. But I mean, I would like to see them sooner than later, if we could.
We can talk about it.
Get some type of communication going on there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, just for clarification, so the dredging is still anticipated to start by summer 2020.
At this point, yeah.
Okay. Is there any way that we can leverage kind of hurricane season and all the storms that happen around then into speeding up the process? Like maybe when we're talking with different officials or permitting, saying, hey, we need to get this done before?
It's possible, but I think it's more of a, a matter of getting the permits approved, and I'm not sure that leveraging upcoming storm season would help with that, but I can always ask.
Okay. And then I just think it's important, just to, on our end, for, for not resting, just having that funding there, especially when it comes to our other representatives, just picking up the phone, calling them, reminding them, hey, we're still in the permitting process, because, you know, I know this has been slated in the past to be done, you know, last year. And I just, you know, this keeps getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back for one reason or another. So I just think it's important for us to keep contacting our officials and representatives that are above us. And I know that they've helped us, and we appreciate that, but just to keep them on the case and see where they can help in the permitting process. My other question was on the expensive dais. Just when, when do you expect that to be, to be here?
I wasn't able to get an update from the fabricator this morning, but the last update, a few weeks ago, we were still a few months out before we'd have that.
Okay. Number twenty-seven on the list, the Beckett Bridge Utility Relocation. I know something that we were all really excited about as a board was the possible introduction of, of mitigating some of the flooding in that area along with this project. Is that something that we're emphasizing throughout the way, like just, you know, keeping tabs on them, saying, hey, remember, also, this, this needs to address flooding?
Absolutely. And in fact, I advocated for the, it will be a county project, of course, but I advocated for them to do the design separately. So if for some reason funding for the bridge doesn't come through, they could still move forward with the design, with the drainage and flooding improvements on the west side.
Okay. And then number nineteen, sorry to jump backwards, but number nineteen, the city building condition assessment. That's something we just talked about earlier.
Yes, sir.
About the Clerks, the Clerks Building. Is this going to be something that's ongoing? So is this, you know, if the city building condition assessment goes well, we like the results from it? Is this something that we're going to be doing annually for now and forever?
I anticipate doing it on an annual basis.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on these items?
Vaticaudis, five thirty-eight West Cedar Street, just two. One, I very much appreciate Connor Donovan, Commissioner Donovan, bringing up the building maintenance issue. The preventive maintenance programs have been discussed. When the Cultural Center debate happened, we did a lot of investigation through the HPPB to try and identify how much preventive maintenance was being done. There wasn't really a formal program, so I think that has to be done, and this is something that was discussed some time ago. So that's something that I'll be helping you with once I'm up there with you. And then, secondly, the one thing that I'd like to add as a project, which I think is extremely important, is the traffic light at the hospital. That's something that, with a new emergency room, the, our position on the NPO PPC, I think expires in January of 2020, according to the information I got. And I think the sooner we, we get started with that, the better off we will be. I know that the hospital's done some traffic studies. I don't know what the status of those are. I do know that with the IKEA apartments, they're making some improvements there, which are according to the plans, but I think, and it's just not traffic light. They're talking about cutting the hill down. FDOT's actually looked at that. They want to cut the hill down in front of the hospital by about two feet in order to improve the light sight, the sightline distance on that. So it's a quite involved process, and, and I think it would be very good for us to get started on that and to help the hospital get that traffic light. That flashing signal light that you see, I want to make sure everybody knows, that's not for anything other than helicopter landing. That's got nothing to do with traffic, except when a, when a helicopter lands, it turns red, I believe. Is that right, Chief Cochin?
That's correct.
Turns red, and that's it. So that's the only signal that they have right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Here none? I just want to remind my fellow commissioners that I'm having meetings, monthly meetings, with County Commissioner David Eggers, and all those things will be related to him. Bob, thank you.
Thank you for your support, all of you.
Okay, we're now going to the concern agenda. Item number eight is satisfaction release of liens. Number nine is the attorney fees. A, Trask and Darnold invoice February sixth, two thousand and twenty. B is Johnson and Junkson invoice fifty-six, forty-three. Number ten is special events. A, Orthodox possession, March eighth, two thousand and twenty. B is Sponge Docks Arts and Crafts Show, April fourth and fifth, two thousand and twenty. C is Good Friday possession, April seventeen, two thousand and twenty. Number eleven is to renew file. Number seventeen, zero, zero, nine, zero, CRS, Leviteri Testing Service through the City of Plank City. RFP sixteen, zero, two, two U O S S. Number twelve is to extend file. Sixteen, zero, zero, fifteen, CX RS Dell Computers through Florida State, contract number forty-three, twenty-one, fifteen, zero, zero, WSC eight, fifteen ACS. Number thirteen is the award file number two, zero, zero, sixty-three, N J L. Signal source, purchase of Flowserve pumping parts and accessories. Number fourteen is the award bid, number two, zero, zero, forty-nine, B J L, slot hauling. Number fifteen is to authorize execution of K nine adoption agreement. And number sixteen is to authorize execution of an update in a, in a local agreement with Pinellas County and Senator Seward overflow marketing campaign. Any of these items that you'd like to pull? Is there any commission comments, items eight through sixteen? Here none? Are there any public comments on these items?
Good evening. Athena's, Ardulia's, six thirty-four East Orange. I have a comment on ten B, the Sponge Docks Arts and Craft Show. In checking the backup, perhaps I've missed it, but I see no information on the historic, I guess, how successful this event has been. I see no, no information on that at all. I believe I spoke at a previous meeting some time ago, how maybe when organizations ask for street closures, an event like this, that maybe it would be a good idea to ask for additional information for the board, too. How successful is it, the event historically, and how does it benefit the merchants in the area? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Clemens, I don't have an answer to give you. Sorry. Any other public comments? Here none? Any motion? End roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarrpenny?
Yes.
Mayor Loeser?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the special concern agenda, item number seventeen. Rescind award of bid number two, zero, 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 thirty-one, B J J, Palm Avenue, Drainage Improvement Rebeat. Steph report.
I'll go ahead and start if Tom or Jake can answer your questions. Obviously, we did this bid, and there is a problem with the local contractor that bid. I made a mistake of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. His mistake is going to put him out of the bid process. You see in the backup, there is sanctions we can do as a city if we want to, but that's something we can talk about later or, or do. We believe it was, it was an error. It wasn't a conscious error. It was just an error in the bids. Obviously, this is a project where we've got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant money is. So what we're asking you to do is rescind the bid to Tim Group and award it to the second, the second highest, the second bid on the list, which I believe is the McKenzie Contracting.
Yes.
So we can get this started. Again, we've got two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant money on the line. As you know, this is the second bid that we did on it, and we did get it down a hundred and some odd thousand dollars, but I don't think we're going to get any lower. And so we really need to get on this project, get started to keep that money secured. So, so this item is to rescind the award from Tim Group and award it to McKenzie Contracting. And Tom, answer any questions that you might have of them, if there's anything else.
Are there any commission comments, questions?
Yeah, my only question would be just if that, if there was somebody from either Tim Group or McKenzie Contracting here tonight. Okay. I'll, I'll let you present first and then go from there.
Well, pretty much as the same manager says, we're just asking you to rescind the, the original agreement and then accept McKenzie Contracting LLC in order to get this project moving. It is very important, since we do have this grand, grant for F MUD, that we move on this project. Anytime you actually pull back and not accept a grant that's accepted from it, it could affect you down the road. So not only is it important that this project gets done, it's also important for future projects and possibly for future grants.
Any other commission comments? Vice Mayor Tarrpenny?
Has this bid amount gone up?
It's about two hundred and sixty thousand more than what Tim Group had, had initially estimated.
Why?
In the backup, there's a letter from Tim Group explaining why.
Bid was misbid.
It's less than the original bids we had a while back, that Tim Group was originally, the first ones we actually rejected, and we put it back out with some changes. So it's definitely lower than that, those bids over here, but still, this next group is about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than Tim Group.
So did we have any, did we accept a bid from Tim Group?
Yeah, we awarded the bid to them.
And then they're telling us that it costs more money?
Yes.
Aren't they on the hook?
They can be, and that's a decision the board can make. If you look in your backup, you'll see the letter from Tim Group, and then the, Mr. Trask's comments on what our options are, how we want to go about this. And there are a couple of options, of course. One is to actually pull the bond. That is an option. Another option is to penalize them for ever bidding on another job for either a short period of time, or just accept their excuse and, and.
But again, in our looking at it, it's the local company that made a mistake. They, they made a mistake on the bid. So, you know, the force, I think, I don't know, you can relay, whoever relayed, talk to them. It'll really put their company in a complete financial bind if we, if we adhere to it, adhere to the bond, or do that and stuff. So that was an option, but, you know, our recommendation was to go forward with the second bid. And again, if we want to put something on them that they can't bid on a project, and again, if we thought it was some kind of game playing or something, but, you know, I think internally they had some issues, and they just made a bad bid.
So I obviously don't ever want to hinder somebody's ability to do business, but I don't think that it's right that we just increase the, the job by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For me, when I looked at the original scope of service and the original bid that we accepted, in terms of what, you know, what the job entails and. terms of what, you know, what the job entails and the area that it's affecting, you know...
Well, they're not getting it. They're thrown out of the process.
I know, I'm just talking about the scope of the job, going from a half million dollar job to a three-quarter of a million dollar job in the area that it is, in the subject area to be affected, it seems like a lot more money to spend. That's my thing. So...
Well, if you look back at the four bids, you'll find out the other three were all fairly close.
Yeah, I understand.
So you can almost understand where they, how they made the mistake now.
I understand as a matter of priority, it changes the priority a little bit when you spend an extra couple hundred grand.
Without doubt.
Right?
Yes, sir.
What was the budgeted expected amount to come in? Because there's an engineer's best estimate, right, when you put these out?
Yeah, the first one, I think, was a little, well, we actually rebid it after the first time. We rejected the first bids. We had some issues, of course, with the first bids. We found some mistakes, some calculation mistakes. The second one, I think, come in around $650,000 was the engineer's estimate, and it come in a little bit more than that, of course, as you can see. Unfortunately, in this market nowadays, it's not uncommon to be, to be off by this much, unfortunately.
So you said there's an option to pull the bond. What does that mean?
Well, I'm sure, so the attorney can probably explain it. Jake can explain it better than I can.
If I'm not mistaken, if we decide to rebid, that's when we would pull the bond. Is that correct?
That's correct. If they don't have the ability to perform the contract, you can pull the bid bond. What's the value of the bid bond? Do we have that?
I'm sorry?
The value of the bid?
Five percent.
So you basically could use that five percent as an offset if you wanted to do that. It would definitely affect their ability to get additional bond coverage for future jobs. And more than likely, the bid, the bonding company would go back after the contractor for that five percent. So they would have to pay it back.
Well, you know, it's many things that we can do. We can punish the, you know, the local contractor or not, but, you know, bottom line is, they made a mistake. And when that happened, he was, he was out of the office. He had a surgery. So they had a, one of his employees that, I guess, didn't know how to do it, right? So mistake was made. So calling the bond is probably going to penalize the company not to do business again in the area. So I'm not really sure if it's worth it doing that.
I'm not, I don't want to go that route.
No, maybe.
Huh?
I don't want to either.
I won't do that. Any other commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
So where does this fall in our list of priorities in terms of stormwater management?
Up towards the top. Yeah, this has been, been a pretty serious area for a number of years. So yeah, in our stormwater action plan, it was one of our highest ranked projects.
And this is the project that we purchased a lot, the property for retention part, correct?
Yes, we did. Yes, Dan, I'm...
What was that, Mayor?
By, by the fire station there.
We purchased a lot for additional stormwater retention?
Yes, we did.
Few years ago.
I'm just chipping away at this penny money, which I can't stand.
I've got one other question for clarification. So the line says rebid, but this isn't actually like a re, this was the initial rebid that came up. This isn't another rebid of the rebid, right?
So when we put it out the second time to differentiate from the first time to the second time, we put rebid on there, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah. Do we have any other options for the $157,000?
Again, the only thing we risk is that we'll lose the $250,000. And then whenever we do the project, it'll be all on our own. So that's, that's what's at stake, that $250,000. I'm not doing it now. So somewhere down the road, if we push it down the road, you know, we may have to finance the whole thing. Plus, when you don't do, when you're awarded something and you don't do it, you're not looked, you're not looked favorably for other ones that you didn't fulfill their bids and stuff. So it's got a little bit of broader ranking to, to, you know, could affect our awards of other ones. So that's why our thing was just to go to the next bidder and do the project and...
Ron, Ron's not here?
The stormwater, again, the stormwater money to do it. We've changed some things to do the stormwater.
But we're also trying to use local option sales tax, which is penny money, right? Can we, can we come up with 160 out of, from somewhere else? Not tie up the penny money?
Would impact funds come from that? I mean, since it's a capital expense and you've got impact funds, is that something that can be leveraged?
I don't know the financial status of that.
I can't answer that one.
How about, how about a motion to approve, but without the penny money? Does that still keep us moving?
Depending where we get the rest of the money from.
But I mean, at least it'll keep us moving down the road and not jeopardize our grant money. Right?
What if money's not available, then what do we do?
Then we got to figure it out.
So we're going to bring it back?
But at least it progresses tonight. You good with that?
But if you're getting 250 from wherever it's coming from, and you have 610 coming out of the stormwater, that's well over the budgeted amount, right?
I think, isn't that because we do it and then it's reimbursed?
Yes.
So that 250 could be reimbursed back to the penny fund, potentially?
So we could do 100% reimbursement, reimbursement to the penny?
I'm not...
Let's roll with that. Let's see what Ron says. Good, Mayor?
Yeah. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? So would you repeat the motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the, in award bid number 20031, Palm Avenue Drainage Improvement, with the caveat that the money's taken from local option sales tax be 100% reimbursed upon receipt of the grant, the $250,000 grant money.
Or funded from another source.
Or funded from another funding source, for sure.
Second.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. We have...
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're now going to the ordinance of resolutions. Item number 18 is a resolution 2020-07, supporting new gateway signage. Seat Attorney, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2020-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Turpin Springs, Florida, supporting the construction of gateway monument signs in the FDOT right-of-way of State Road or SR 595, US Highway 19, alternate, and SR 55, US 19. That was reading a resolution 2020-07 by Title Only.
And I'm going to let Bob handle this one, because I'm still shaking my head on it.
I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. So this resolution is intended to indicate the board's review and approval of placing gateway signs in FDOT rights-of-way. This resolution fulfills a requirement of the DOT for permitting purposes, basically just stating that the city is wanting to put them there. That's it in a nutshell, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
It's hard to understand that they asked, make us do that.
Yes, sir.
Once we applied for it.
Right.
I don't have any questions.
This is just a formality, right?
Yeah, just a formality.
All right. I think this is a great idea.
Commissioner Donovan?
Just to clarify, so these are those welcome signs that we just voted on, right? Just between the entryway signs, the wayfinding signs, these are the welcome signs, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, just for board clarification from my end, I'm going to vote no on this, just because I voted no on those original welcome signs, because I thought we should go with the, the cheaper option.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Approve.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes. Next is item number 19, resolution 2020-06, school crossing guard substituting position. Seat Attorney, please read the resolution.
This is resolution 2020-06, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Turpin Springs, Florida, authorizing a change in the police department organization, specifically the addition of a part-time position and providing for an effective date hereof. That was reading a resolution 2020-06 by Title Only.
Mr. Licors?
Bob, Coach, I'll have him present this. Thank you. So as is provided in the backup, we have seven school zones throughout the city that are covered by six school crossing guard positions. And a lot of times, it works out good. Some of these crossing guards will cover multiple positions, but the problem starts to happen is when one of them can't, you know, be available, whether they're sick or they're on vacation. So usually, we'll try and have another school, school guard cover it. If they can't, we have to cover it with patrol. These are part-time positions with no benefits. So what we're asking for is just one additional school crossing guard position as a backup. So when one doesn't, one can't, you know, show up for assignment, we basically would have the one fill in. It wouldn't cost us anything budgetarily because the one that didn't show up wouldn't be getting paid and the one in their place would be getting paid. So it's a big help for us and we have to do a resolution to ask you for the additional backup position. Thank you.
Thank you. It's very important that we provide safety doors, and that's for sure. Commission comments? Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, I just, I want to bring up one area that this talks about here is Ultra 19 in Pine Street. This is obviously a state road. There's a crosswalk, I believe, in this area, and it's right by Eco Bean Coffee. I've had some residents bring this up as a concern that it's difficult to cross here. I'm not sure if there's an opportunity to talk with the state, see if there's a flashing beacon that we can maybe look at to address some pedestrian safety for the crossing in this area, or if that's something that you could help us out with, at least inquiring some further research.
We could take a look.
Thanks.
Commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? We need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes. Next is item number 20. This is the ordinance 2020-03, regulation of parking in electric vehicle spaces. This is the first reading. Seat Attorney, please read the ordinance.
This is ordinance 2020-03, an ordinance of the City of Turpin Springs, Florida, amending section 18-12 fines established, fines established of Division 1, generally of Article 2, parking, stopping, and standing of Chapter 18, traffic of the Code of Ordinances, to establish a fine for non-electric vehicles parked in any parking space specifically designated for charging an electric vehicle and providing for an effective date, this ordinance. That was the first reading of ordinance 2020-03 by Title Only. The second reading will be on March 10, 2020, and it will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by Title Only on February 28, 2020.
Thank you. Chief, you want to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Currently, as you know, we have four locations for EV charging stations that can accommodate 10 vehicles. What we've been finding out is we have no means to enforce this. Currently, our ordinances don't provide a mechanism for us to enforce any vehicle that's going to park there that's not an electric vehicle. So all we're asking is for, like any other parking violation, to amend this ordinance, just one section of it, where we can enforce this with a $25 fine, just like any other no parking zone for these EV locations. So that's pretty much the gist of what we're asking you to do.
Chief, you're going to place a sign so people will know that they're not allowed to park?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thanks. Commission comments? Commissioner Carr?
I've got a quick question. So what happens if it's just an electric vehicle that's parked there, it's not charging? Would they still also be ticketed for that?
If they're an electric vehicle, they're an electric vehicle.
But the parking spots started to encourage people to come?
That's correct.
To charge, right?
But if you look, basically with the ordinance, it's any vehicle that is not able to be charged parking there.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's something that, if we found that someone was just parking there because they had no other place to park, we would definitely contact that person and say, that's what it's meant for, you charge your car and leave. But, you know, that's something, there's always some gray areas in these things, but that's something that we would work out operationally.
Yeah, because technically, I could just take that charger and put it on my truck, right? And it looks like it's charging?
You can try.
Yeah, I'm just, all right, thanks.
Any other commission comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is just something that, when I was going through the backup, kind of confused me, was that this is going to be H, so parking in non-electric vehicle within any parking space specifically designated for charging an electric vehicle, $25 fine. The two above it, motor running, no attendant, $25 fine, keys in ignition, $25 fine. These are things that are probably ill-advised, but I don't think we should be ticketing people for that, right? I mean, who's it hurting if I leave my key in my ignition, which I never would? I get that it's dumb to do, but, and this isn't a complaint I received. I mean, I can't imagine how many people we ticket for leaving their keys in their ignition. But is this something that tonight, we'd be able to look at? I have no problem bringing it up at like a later agenda item to try to undo that, but I just think it's stupid to ticket people because they leave their keys in their ignition, or that their motor's running.
So the answer to the question is, is that it is a policy decision as to whether or not you wanted to change those code sections. I would, I would think that the police department would probably have some research to do on that and tell you the reasons why it's in the code. It has been in the code for a significant period of time, and it's not unusual for any other city to have a similar type of violation.
I think it's unnecessary. I mean, I'd be really upset if I got a ticket because my keys were my ignition. I wouldn't even really know how they figured that one out. I guess this is something I'll put on a different agenda item, but I guess that kind of opened my eyes to kind of something I think could lead to a needless ticket. And then also, overall, with the parking spaces, do we have any data or is there any monitoring? I think we asked this before, on how, how these parking spaces are actually being used? How many people are actually charging there?
Yeah, we can get that data.
Okay. Yeah, I would really be interested to see that data, because I, I mean, I can count on one hand the amount of times that I've seen people actually charging their electric cars at these parking spaces. I just, I never see anybody in them, and it's frustrating for me. So if I could get that data, that'd definitely be something I'd like to look at. And then maybe on a future, future agenda item, I would, I would look at ticketing or not ticketing people for leaving their keys in their ignition.
If I may comment on that, this is just in line with state statute. This is all following state statute. State statute has the same provisions for parking keys in the ignition, a vehicle left running unattended. And there are reasons for this, but we are simply following state statute. So I wouldn't advise us taking out of the ordinance. We want to stay consistent with state statute. But again, like this attorney said, it's a policy decision up to the commission. So that's just my input, so.
Okay. And like all the other ones, I see where it references state statute. Like E, the one above it, it says, in violation of section 316.1945 state statute. I, the one below it, it says authorized by sections 316 dot 660 and 318 point 21 Florida statute. These ones have no reference to any Florida statute.
They're all in Florida statutes.
So I know, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you that they're not in Florida statutes, but every single other one references which Florida statute it's in violation of, and these ones just don't have it. So I guess maybe that's something we need to add.
I mean, I have no problem adding it, but I'll have to work with the city attorney to add those sections, but they are in state statute.
So one thing that you have to worry about is, is that if the language of your code is just a little bit different than the state statute, then you've got an ambiguity and a possible technical defense for anybody that's ever charged with any of those things. So we can provide you with the cross citations, but I don't think they're necessary to be in the code. But we can definitely provide you with a backup on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see it, but, I mean, I'm done talking about it. I think, you know, we get the point, but thank you.
Sure.
Any other commission comments? Any public comments on this item? Here none? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to item number 20, 21, which is the ordinance 2020-05, ad valorem tax exemption. This is a second reading. Seat Attorney, please read the ordinance.
Mayor Commissioners, ordinance 2020-05, an ordinance of the City of Turpin Springs, Florida, establish an exemption for, from certain ad valorem taxation for certain new businesses and expansions of existing businesses, to be codified as Chapter 17, Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Turpin Springs, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for definitions, providing for establishment of economic development ad valorem tax exemption, providing for an application for exemption, providing for the Board of Commissioners consideration of such application, providing for no application fees, providing for continuing performance, providing for the Board of Commissioners revocation of exemption, providing for severability, providing for a sunset date, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2020-05 by Title Only. It was published... It was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 14th by Title Only.
Karen, do you have any new information?
There's been nothing changed since the first reading.
Any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes. Okay, we're now going to item 22, Resolution 2020-01, Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Documents. Your attorney, please read the resolution.
This is Resolution Number 2020-01, Resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, adopting certain documents here to attach for the use and evaluations, certification, and implementation of the Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption as codified by ordinance 2020-05, and providing for an effective date. That was reading of Resolution 2020-01 by Title Only.
Okay, Ms. Lemons, you're going to tell us how we're going to implement this?
Yes. Now that you've adopted the ordinance which adopts the program, this resolution would adopt the documents that are needed to administer and implement the program. So what you have in front of you is Exhibit A, which is the application itself. This is the application that the business would fill out. Attached to that is another form that's required by state statutes to accompany that. Exhibit B is the tax exemption agreement. This is the agreement between the city and the business. And then finally Exhibit C is the annual report. So this would be, if it's all approved, each year we would require the business to fill out the annual report to make sure they're still compliant with all the regulations. So what would happen with Exhibit A, that's the first step, business feels that they're qualified, they fill out the application, it gets reviewed by the staff, it also gets reviewed by the Pinellas County Property Appraisers Office, and he provides a report back. Then the recommendation comes from staff that everything is approved. Then that comes back to you as the board with Exhibit B, which is the exemption agreement between the city and the business, along with an ordinance. And at that point, then, you would look at it all and either approve it, or amend it, or deny it. So all of these come back to you as a case-by-case basis.
Mrs. Lemon, I think this is a very good program to, to implement, but I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask you. One is, how do you, if you can explain to us, what do you consider to be a qualified annual average wage, and how do you get that information?
The average annual wage is what's published by Enterprise Florida Inc., which is the economic development organization for the state. Currently in Pinellas County, it's $47,273. So it's an annual wage that adjusts each year.
$47,000, okay. I know we're going to have two VOC public hearings for that. Is also going to be a planning and zoning board public hearing or not?
No, it's not necessary under the statute.
No, okay. The requirements on the number of jobs is 10, 10 jobs, they must create 10 jobs in order to qualify?
It depends on the business. 10 jobs for manufacturing, qualified target industries is 10 jobs. Office is 50 jobs. And then if the business has more than 50% of its sales coming from outside of the state of Florida, it's 25 jobs.
Who's setting this threshold? Is that we do?
State statutes.
State statute, okay. The reason I was asking that, as probably very difficult for us in Tarpon Springs to attract somebody to create 10 jobs, probably easier with 18 or something like that.
We'll do our best.
Can't do that.
Mm-mm.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Seber?
Yeah, I think it's a great incentive for businesses, new businesses and, and expanding businesses. And this is for the whole city of Tarpon Springs.
Yes, it's citywide.
Commissioner Donovan, you have a question?
No.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Thank you. We go to miscellaneous. Item 23 has been deferred, so we go to 24, which is a sale of surplus property described as a Lake Valdez Villa, CO subdivision, southern 30 feet of Lot 32 McCurdy.
Louis comes up, I hope not like the last one. This is rather simple. This is a piece of property that's, that's not needed by the city. It has nothing on it. It's in the back of this gentleman's yard. It's a maintenance issue of constantly see going on the maintenance. This gentleman went through and got the appraisal of it. We did all the checks, if it's needed, not needed. And again, to Tom, it's, it's a maintenance headache and that off, you know, out of his function. So the, as you see in there, he's agreeing to pay the appraised value, and we recommend that we, and as it says on there, they noticed the other property owners. So we recommend that we sell this for the appraised value of $2,000 to the property owner, Mr. McCurdy. I don't know if Louis has anything else to add.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Now, I really don't have anything else to add other than to note that we have not heard from the adjacent property owners. We've not received responses to those, to the notice. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
How did we gain ownership on that part? Just a problem.
I don't, it was, it was a long, long time ago. I don't know how, the back part of that house and the, I don't know what purpose, how we gained it, but it's been of no use for as long as we've, we've had it.
Okay. Any commission comments? Vice Mayor Terapany?
Thank you. So just for, just for some clarity, this is a piece of city-owned property, not city right-of-way, is that right?
Right.
And that's the difference between our process in terms of selling it versus giving it?
Yes.
Thank you. Just for clarity, there's not a survey attached, right? It's just an appraisal?
Correct. There's not a survey, it's just an appraisal.
Okay.
Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here now? Please come to the podium.
Hey, good evening.
State your name and your address, please.
I'm Mr. McCurdy.
Okay.
I live at 528 East Center Street. I've been trying to acquire this property for about four or five years now. Just a nuisance property for you guys. The two neighbors next to me have the same yard. For whatever reason, it was divided before I bought the property, and just want to use the yard and basically make it part of my property instead of you guys taking care of the property back there, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that's it.
Are there any other public comments? I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alouzis?
Yes, thank you. No, no, no. Good luck to you, though. Thank you. Okay. Item number 25 is donation of limestone, Commissioner Seber.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I brought this idea up last November about using some limestone on the sponge docks, limestone overlay on the sponge docks, which I think would really enhance the sponge docks. And many of our business owners that I've spoken to feel that we need some kind of enhancement, some cleaning up on the docks. The city has not spent a lot of money on the docks in the past few years. So this is one project I think would beautify the docks, and we're talking about only one portion of the docks, the middle section where our boat is, and the two planters. Now, when I brought this up back in November, we, we didn't have this new development. So I wanted to share this with you. And Mayor, I don't know what you've done in the meantime, because you said you had also talked to some people and colonists about the rock being donated. So since we can't talk because of sunshine, I don't know where you stand in the last few months. Was there anything new that you wanted to tell us about?
No, no. But what I wanted to say is that, at this time, we do not have any projects committed for any limestone rock to be placed anywhere. But a month ago, we gave direction to City Manager Mr. Licors to have town hall meetings with business owners, property owners, residents in large, to get ideas and to get some kind of a plan, what are we going to do to, to develop the sponge docks. I think we need to have a plan on exactly what we're going to do before we accept any gifts, or what are we going to, you know, what to do. I think we need to hear from the people exactly what they want, and I don't mean just for certain people, but again, we'd like to hear Mr. Licors from the business owners, the property owners, and the residents in large in the city of Tarpon Springs. That way we have a plan, and we know exactly what the people want for us to build. That's my position on that. At this time, we don't have anything like that. We're waiting for Mr. Licors to have those town hall meetings.
Okay, may I speak now? This is my item?
Hold on.
I want to explain more.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I have been meeting with, with merchants on the docks on Thursday mornings and have gotten a lot of input from, from the merchants and a lot of complaints about, we've been complacent as a city. This is an improvement that I feel we can move forward because we need 17 pallets of this rock to complete that project, and 10 of those pallets are being gifted to us. So turning down a gift of 10 pallets, I don't think is, is that wise. I feel that, well, first of all, how we got to this, the owner of the rock, or the quarry and colonists, they do the exporting of the rock and, and bring it into a local business here in Tarpon Springs. They are the only ones that are certified and had all, all the requirements through customs to export this rock and, and bring it in. So it's not like we can get it from anybody. And because we've been negotiating for a while, we use the rock for the nads, and I would like to use it for other projects, the person representing the, the company that's going to lay the rock came to me and offered me this rock for free. I decided to meet with him and Karen Lemmons because he said he had investors that, that were interested in investing some money in Tarpon Springs. And this was just a start with this rock by donating us 10 pallets. There's pictures of the pallets in your backup, too. But saying no to 10 pallets of free rock, I think is kind of silly, when it could improve our sponge docks and, and make a difference on the sponge docks. We definitely need, I talked to citizens, business owners, they don't come to the docks because they say it's just a tourist trap and it needs a facade. I'm really happy that we did, we were able to approve a facade grant for businesses on the docks, and some of them will be taking advantage of that. But I would just like to go forward with this. I don't have much time left on the commission. It's something I've been working on for a while. And I know it's something that a lot of our business owners want to see happen. So my suggestion, suggestion is to take these 10 pallets and, and go from there.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Thank you. I think it's, you know, a worthy project. I've, myself have traveled to Greece and have been to the islands, and I do think that it would enhance the area. My concern is that, given the sensitivity of, you know, the area of the sponge docks and the different ideas that the merchants and the property owners and the public alike, you know, share, I just want to tread a little bit lightly on how we move forward with it as it relates to like public input. I do think it's a good thing, but given the sensitivities, I would hate for us to accept a donation and then go for, go for public input, and we have this, you know, 10 pallets of rock or whatever sitting in a public, public services yard. So I think that we probably need to have a little bit more comment holistically with the entrance feature that we're trying to work on. And then I like the idea of tackling the project like for the whole city dock versus just a portion of it. But I would definitely want to try and have more of a stakeholders meeting, you know, before we just move forward on the project. So that's kind of, that's where I'm at. I think it's a good thing. I think it would look nice, but I'd like to make sure that we have all of our boxes checked in terms of stakeholders and have a meeting to make sure that this is something that everybody wants before we, you know, put it in storage.
And actually, we are having a meeting Friday morning on the, just to answer.
I have to give you, I have to give you that. You're finished?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to answer. Commissioner Terapany, there is a meeting set for Friday morning on the sponge docks for business owners to come to. We've advertised it, you know, people know about it. So hopefully we have a good turnout.
This coming Friday?
Yes.
One other thing, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't know if you need to be given permission to talk. So unfortunately, this meeting is happening before that meeting, but we do have some business owners here who want to speak on, on this project. But we are having a meeting Friday morning and to talk about all different aspects of the docks. The reason I'm starting with just this section is because it's quite an expensive project. I'd love to see the whole dock area done, the sidewalks done, the landing done at, at the bayou and the walk, walkway around the bayou. But, you know, it's, it's not going to be cheap to do that. So I'm just recommending that we start with a small part of the docks where our sponge boat is and, and those two planters, because we need to do something. We can't just sit back and keep not improving.
The one thing, Mayor, if I may, mentioned, just, I had it in my notes and I looked over it. In terms of, in my experience in the past trying to do projects like this, with the procurement restrictions that we have in terms of procedure, you said that you'd had a contractor or somebody look at installing the material, and then also that, that of the 17 pallets, 10 would be donated. And then, so where does that leave us in terms of procurement with the purchasing of the additional material, and then also with laying the material or installing the material? I just don't want us to get into a procurement issue where we're not following the right protocol.
No, I definitely understand. I've looked into that. Originally, it was us purchasing the 17 pallets and paying for the installation. The man, Sean, who represents the consulting company or the, the development company, is the one that's offering us the 10 pallets. So we would only be paying for seven pallets out of the 10, and then the installation. Now, like I said earlier, we talked, Karen and I talked to him, he's got a lot of projects he wants to do in Tarpon Springs, which I think is a good thing. We don't want to turn away free projects or, or help. So this is a start for him by offering us 10 pallets.
I think one of the things you're saying, and one of the things I've already talked to the city attorney about, and do it, if you accept this, it would be an unconditional donation, because we don't have a project set. So I'm sure, I'm sure the city attorney, if this was approved, would draw up a document. It would not be that you have to do this. It has nothing, don't equate this with anything of this guy's giving us the rock, and then we're going to contract with him and purchase it, and he's going to get business from it, because obviously that's a no-no that violates this other thing. So in this donation, the city attorney would, would write and have it signed with a donation that it's an unconditional donation to the city to be used, you know, how the city is fit, and it doesn't guarantee him nothing. He hasn't been guaranteed nothing. There's no future, you know, no future plans that he's guaranteed by this. It would be strictly donating the rock, and then, of course, everything else would fall into the procurement procedures and processes, and there would be, you know, no favoritism for our part on the part of this. So I think that's what you're kind of working for it about.
Yeah, it's nothing against anybody. It's just a matter of procedure.
Right.
Yeah, and, and the cost is, is going to be very minimal to the city with this donation. So if we proceed with this improvement on the sponge docks, procurement, we've already talked, it's, it's not going to be a huge amount.
Okay.
So we would just have to look for the funding for the rest of it.
Yeah, I've just got a quick question. So this is a 3,400 square feet you're talking about in this area?
Right.
And so the city would have to buy seven pallets, but then there's additional areas of...
We're only talking about the middle section.
Commissioner Seber, would you please? Stop interrupting, will you, please?
Can I, is it okay if I ask you a couple of questions, just for clarification? So, so it's 3,400 square feet that we're talking about, that's on the city dock, that you're looking to have this done. Seven, or seven pallets would need to be purchased. So 10 pallets you're going to be giving... So, ten pallets are going to be given, gifted to the city ultimately to purchase another, I don't know, forty pallets or so? Is that kind of what I'm looking at?
We only need seventeen pallets for the project and ten would be...
For thirty-four hundred square feet, right?
Yeah, ten would be done.
So, you have another one, three, six, even another seven thousand square feet on the dock though.
We're not doing the whole dock, we're not talking about the whole dock, sorry.
Okay.
We're only talking about needing to purchase seven pallets.
Yeah, from a project standpoint, I don't support just doing part of it. I think we need to look at holistically. If we're going to do it, we need to do all of it instead of just part of it. And the other element is we need to evaluate the other alternative products that are available too. To me, I think brick were more used, actually wood was used in the dock when it was first installed. If there's a way to use wood, I don't know if that would be safe or not. I like the use of clay brick, I think that has a historic feel to it. I like lime rock from Florida, that also has a feel to where we're at. Am I against doing rock? I'm not, but I want to be able to evaluate the other options instead of just saying doing the rock because what this does here is you end up creating an elevated dock on top of the dock. So, if the pavers are four inches thick or whatever it may be and they sit on a coat of mud, then at that point, you're going up like a ramp onto these pavers because you're not doing the whole area. So, that's a concern I would have from a safety standpoint, and I think it's important to evaluate all options instead of just saying rock because to me, this is, I think, can be perceived as an enticement and in procurement, that's not a good thing. If you're donating ten pallets for a project that's being expected to be used and then you're going to be buying more pallets of rock, I think there's a conflict of interest there. One thing I'm not against though is looking at the planters where the palm trees are. I think it would be a good idea to wrap those in rocks and I would support something along those lines by wrapping the palm trees with the rocks. But from the paver standpoint, I just don't think, I think it's kind of a far-fetched right now to only do a part of the area and to not evaluate other options available for material. And then also the need to have to purchase a significant amount of additional rock.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just to clarify, so seventeen pallets would be needed to complete this project. And when we say project, we're talking in terms of the thirty-four hundred feet.
Right, just this section right here.
On the original email from April though, it says a total square feet of nine thousand four hundred and forty-eight square feet. So, basically what I'm hearing is that we would use seventeen pallets to complete thirty-four hundred of the ninety-four hundred plus square feet of the dock?
Well, yeah, that's the total amount of the dock, but, you know, we don't have the funding for that total amount and since we've been offered ten pallets out of the seventeen we need for that small square footage, I didn't think it would be wise to say no because if we do say no, we're not going to get that offer again. So, you know, it's up to you guys.
So, it's not necessarily a donation then, is it? It's more like an offer of, hey, we'll give you these ten free pallets, you guys buy the other seven from us, but then down the line, you're going to need to complete this ninety-four hundred eventually and we already have that working, established relationship. So, I just feel as though it's kind of not a donation. Like what is Pinellas County contractors, are they gaining anything from the donation? Like we would be working with them to get the other seven pallets, correct?
Right, they're the ones that do the installation. This is not just like a brick or a paver where you just, you know, install it. It's actually an artistic way of installing this because it's, each rock is cut out and put like a mosaic on there. It's a, you know, a long process. But, you know, we only are starting with a small section because we can't fund the ninety-four hundred square feet or the rest of sidewalks. If you go to Greece or I was just recently in Portugal, all their sidewalks and streets are all with stone and artistically set stone which lasts forever. Cement doesn't last forever, it needs to be repaved, it cracks. But, you know, based on centuries of using this stone in Europe, it's still there. So, you know, to me, that would be an economic way also to beautify our city, we're using this stone to, you know, to just enhance what we have already.
Yeah, I just think it's important to differentiate between donate and discount because to me, this is saying, hey, I'll give you ten pallets knowing full and well that you're going to get the rest of the pallets from me. A donation would just be, hey, I'm giving you ten pallets.
Well, you know, of course, these people want, you know, more pallets to be used. They're not stupid, but, you know, they also have said that they want to invest some money in Tarpon Springs. So, when Karen and I met with them, they asked her for some properties that need rehabilitation or properties that are vacant that need something done with them, developed. So, this is, you know, a long time type of development, not just this little section. But they offered us ten rocks for free, so if we say no, we don't do the project.
Well, so, and again, I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not sure, but so was that your understanding? Was that if we don't take these rocks, then they have no interest in developing in Tarpon Springs?
That's probably what's going to happen.
Okay, so this just doesn't sound like a donation at all then to me? This is, you know...
They're wanting us to move forward with this project and we can't, we don't have the funding for this whole project. It costs about fifty thousand dollars. We're cutting the project in half with the donations so and so. I mean, you're talking with someone who's a business owner, you're not going to just say, yeah, we'll take your, I don't know, that's what Mark said, take your ten pallets and not work with you. You know, we don't have an interest in you after that. So, that from a business standpoint, they are offering the ten pallets, hoping that we'll do the work with them.
Yeah, but from the city pallet, or from the city standpoint, to me, it's almost like strong-arming the commission. It's saying, hey, if you don't take this donation, I don't have any interest in developing in Tarpon Springs.
Well, they didn't say that to me, obviously. But, you know, that's just my sense.
But I think it's kind of insinuated in it, saying, hey, it's just a discount, it's not a donation. It's take these ten pallets, buy the other seven from us, and then also, this project is only going to be a third done. So, I think really, if we take this donation, then we would be obligated to move forward with all the ninety-four hundred square feet, or at least that would be the impression, that at some point, we were going to complete that area. And is there any cost of installation or any idea what that would cost? Because all this is just cost per product.
Yeah, the installation would be about seven dollars a foot, a square foot, so...
Commissioner Donovan?
Let's not lose focus that any of those projects that we do, especially in a sensitive area as the sponge docks is, which represents our culture as well as the local economy, we can't, I will not support anything unless we have a public input. So, it's very, very important that we have the town hall meetings with business people, business owners, with the property owners and residents before we come up with any decision what we should do.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I don't think I...
If you want to tell us exactly what they want, not because we have a friend who wants to donate or wants to create jobs here for himself.
I agree, I agree wholeheartedly. I don't think anything I've said so far has indicated that I want to curb public input. That's not my intention at all. I just want to point out the fact that this is a discount and not a donation. And also, I feel as though there's just a real lack of backup on this. The only thing that's really changed since the October one, which we just have, you know, the picture and the email and the area, is just now that we have somebody willing to give us a discount on the rocks. So, to me, I just don't have enough in front of me and I would definitely value that public input that would come from a town hall type setting.
And, you know, when this was brought forward to me about the donation, I thought about what the mayor said, getting rock for free from Colonnus, and I thought, wow, if we can get ten pallets for free, that's a good deal. If you guys don't want to move forward with this, I don't know what's going to happen, maybe it can be talked about at the Friday morning meeting with the merchants that are coming from the docks. But I know it's been a long time coming to do something on the sponge docks and our businesses are down, they're suffering, you know, and we owe it to our businesses to hear them. So, I feel like with Friday morning's meeting, there are people here that want to speak, we need to do something to move forward, not just keep talking about it for another five years. Because it's been something I've talked about for a while.
Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item?
Who did you talk to? Who was the man that approached the commissioner? What was his name?
He's the representative of Pinellas County Contractors.
Okay, and what was the name of the gentleman?
His name is Sean.
Sean what?
Which is his last name?
No, I can't read his last name. Do you remember his last name? We have a card, but...
Okay, you know, we don't have a plan document. We've got a beautiful historic area in Tarpon Springs. I don't know what color these are, we don't know what we want to use down there. You have to have your historic board here in the city work with you on this. You need to have the Greek community work with you on this. This is our heritage here of Tarpon Springs. It's a culture. You just can't start piecemealing all this stuff to make it look good. We turned down Poseidon, we're working on a gateway to the docks, we're working with that. The cost, we don't even know what the pallets are going to cost to finish everything. Please, do not do this without working through a plan with all the organizations. You know, the way to go with this is get your organizations of the boats of years ago and look at the history of this. And I say time after time and you're tired of hearing it, look how they've preserved in St. Augustine. Look how they preserved on the other coast, the historical value of the communities. Here, we're going to do something just to piecemeal it? That's wrong. And you don't know what design you want to keep down at the docks with the heritage. Don't do anything in a hurry and lose what you've got there. It's stupid just to go do it here, here, and here. I have received some material left in my mailbox. I want to turn it over to the city attorney. I'm asking the mayor, the city manager, the attorney, and the police chief to look at this and see if we want to continue. We have a good name in Tarpon Springs, we have a good reputation, let's protect it, okay? If it's nothing, Mr. Attorney, then it's left. If it's something, we better be very cautious of what we do with anything and anybody in our community. Anything, anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening once again. Phoenis Ardules, 634 East Orange. Thank you for hearing me. I am relieved by Mr. LeCurs's comments and I look forward to our meeting later this week. I think you'll get a lot of good feedback from the folks down there, and I appreciate you coming down. I know you are busy. I guess I'll just repeat my comments of several months ago. I appreciate where Commissioner Seaver is coming from because I think it's with a good heart and I think she really feels for the dock merchants, there's no question there. Again, my personal opinion, I don't see how paving part of the working sponge dock with stones is going to increase business at the docks nor enhance an experience for our visitors. I think we need additional parking, I think we needed a parking garage. I think the dock, before we put anything on top of it, needs to be inspected for structural integrity. These rocks would certainly add a lot of weight. On the other hand, we shouldn't do anything before we consult the working boats that use the dock itself. I don't think this is going to help them do their work, I think it will complicate it. The other thing we need desperately is additional restrooms. We need pressure cleaning on a regular basis, I know we did some, but we've got to do more. Refresh of the landscape, thank you very much, Mr. LeCurs, for the poinsettias, they were beautiful, and I'm hoping as it warms up, we'll do more of that in the planters and around the dock area. These things that I've listed are what my customers have been telling me, critical analysis, people that come year in and year out for the last twenty-three years that I've been there. Parking, restrooms, and I kind of disagree with the notion that the city hasn't done anything at the docks. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent there in the last five years and it looks good. The only thing that I feel we're lacking is an entry feature, which I know Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Tarpani, our mayor, everybody's been talking about this and we will get there and we will find the right thing. We're going to give it considered time and get everybody's input. So, I think it's well meant, but I am against this and it is a matter of taste. I agree with Commissioner Carr, there's so many other options we could use. There's also a stamped concrete that looks like wood that would be durable, but bring back that rustic look. I think that would make more sense. I think over time, trying to maintain these rocks is going to be a nightmare for the city. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Andreas Alvaras, 495 Riverside Drive. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. LeCurs, because you plan to come to talk to the business in the sponge docks for the first time, who is, I'm very pleased. But I want to say a few things tonight. I don't say, I don't come before, but I will, I want to come this time. First of all, both of them is my friends, especially Mrs. Prolos, who is a family friend. I want to disagree with her because sponge docks, we have to keep it, of course, the flavor of the Greek community. But the only difference, how we do it to keep it? I don't see commissioners to come down to see what we're doing. The only thing commissioners is looking for downtown. I want to ask you, Mr. Tarpani, if somebody give you ten pallets, what you have to do in downtown? You have to put it in the sidewalk or not? I want to talk to Mr. Donovan. This is tricky. No, it's not, Mr. Donovan, tricky. If somebody give you something free, you have to accept it, not to say discount. Discount, if you go to pay, you say five percent discount or ten percent discount. But I want to tell you something else. I want to direct now to Mr. Mayor. It's not my idea. That's we, that's my idea, not mine. If it's not my idea, I don't want anything. What are we doing for sponge docks? For last two years? What we make, how much money we spend from sponge docks for last two years? I want to ask you commissioners and then Mr. Mayor. How much we spend? The only thing we're talking over here, but we never mention about sponge docks, Mr. Tarpani, Mr. Carr, Mr. Donovan, Israeli, it's not to longer, the commissioners. What are we doing? What you doing? I'm not mad, I'm upset. The stones, if you, I want to ask Mr. Carr, Mr. Carr, you visit Greece, you know how to see the Greece, the islands? I don't think so. All the islands, they have the, this kind of stone in the street and the sidewalk, but they don't have a sidewalk, but in the street. It's not the Greek flavor. Come on. I don't want to call you boys because it's not fair, but I called you, you don't care about the sponge docks. about the sponge docks. Not even Mayor, not even the commissioners, because we had this time to say, we have to do something for the sponge docks. We turned down. We say, no, it's not necessary. Let's wait more time. Wait more time.
If you finish up, your time has expired, please.
Thank you. But I want to tell you, wake up. And I'm against Ms. Anita, because sometimes she's negative. It's my personal friend. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
My name is Jennifer Panayotis. I live at 273 Roosevelt Boulevard and have a business down at the sponge docks. I appreciate that you are looking at this tonight, because like Mr. Severus just said, doing something to make some improvements down there is beneficial for the whole city. If you Google Tarpon Springs, the sponge docks is what comes up. Commissioner Seaver has invested a lot of time and energy to really find out. She's come to my business, other businesses, and she really cares about the sponge docks. And I don't think you can get more Greek flavor than taking stone that's been blown out of a mountain in Kalimnos and put in a very small area at this point, at a small cost comparatively to other things that can be done. The rock down by the Niads, gorgeous. People are there photographing every single day. I think having it in that area would be beautiful. I think the upkeep would be less than some of the other options that are there. And again, Commissioner has done her homework and found out about the costs of these things, about the fact that this particular local company, a tarpon company, has everything in order to make this happen where nobody else does, so it could happen rather quickly. And again, Commissioner Seaver has come and spoken with many of the people. I've seen her walk through our door many times, and not just on this, but on just the general well-being of the businesses down at the sponge docks. And I appreciate that, and I am in total support of this project. I think it would really bring a lot. I hear customers coming in every day who say, oh, you know, it's amazing to have something that reminds me of Greece or other parts of Europe. And having traveled there myself and seen these stones and the feeling you get when you're stepping on something that you know is millions of years old, the history of Greece could literally be right under our feet here in Tarpon Springs. And I think that our visitors would appreciate that. So I support this entirely. Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Geltman, 735 Dodecanese, 769 Dodecanese. I am president of the Merchant Association, have been for many years. I took a sabbatical as a Rhea, and I've been president for a long time. Listen, we're having a meeting Friday morning. Can we maybe talk about this, table it or whatever? Because we'll bring it up Friday morning, talk about it, because right now it doesn't seem so positive. Bring it up then. Also discuss how else we can put some money into the docks in fixing it up. I've been there for 25 years. I've seen some help, but it is an important historical part of Tarpon Springs, and let's see the best how we can do for it. Maybe the rocks are it. I haven't seen them. I'd love to see them, but it could add a lot of culture and look, natural look of whatever we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Costa, excuse me, Costa Vaticotas. I just have a question. I'm not sure I'm hearing all the details, and maybe a yes or no would be helpful for everybody. I know where the residents are. There is some preconceived notion that the rocks are going to be placed on the sponge docks. I know the city manager is saying that it would be, it would be a gift that's unconditional. And I've seen the backup, which is not real detailed one way or the other. Does this gift, as far as the commission know, and maybe this would be a question for Commissioner Seaver, does this gift come with a condition that, one, it be used for paving the sponge docks, and number two, that Pinellas County Contractors LLC does the installation? That would be very helpful to know. Right now, I've assumed that it was just a gift that the city could use, but I begin to sense that that's not the case. So is, in the discussions with Pinellas County Contractors LLC, was this gift have the condition that it would be used as paving for the sponge docks and two, that they would do the installation? Thank you.
How are you doing? Ray Simpson, 531 Athens. I came here tonight mainly to support Rhea, because she's been down there, and had I not come here tonight, I don't know who any of the rest of you are. She comes down there and she supports us. I have a lot of respect for what she said over here, even though we disagree. I have a lot of respect for her, because she's there. She's part of it. She puts in there. I don't know if these bricks are perfect or not, but I know they come from a good place, and people down in the sponge docks would like some of that work, and I'm all about discussions. And Rhea, thank you for all your support. Appreciate it.
Any other public comments? Okay, back to the commissioners.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to kind of break the notion that the city doesn't spend any money in the sponge docks. Just for clarification, there's a $3 million dredge that's going to directly impact the sponge docks that the city's been working on for the past four-plus-five years. There's another $1.7 million appropriation request with the state of Florida that is in place to help the flooding mitigation for the sponge docks, specifically only for the sponge docks. Here's $500,000 that the city spent this past fiscal year to upgrade the city marina and do some dredging. Again, that's to help the sponge docks specifically. There's another stormwater improvements for the backflow valves. That was $100-plus thousand. There's another $200,000 of public art down on the west end, another probably $15,000 of bike racks. That was also public art. There's been improved signage. There's been banners added. There's also additional public art to come, and then there's large plantings of palm trees that cost a significant amount of money as well. So the notion that the city's not doing anything or doesn't care about the sponge docks is not true in any regard. I visit sponge docks monthly, and it's what, it's one of the heartbeats of Tarpon Springs. So to say that the sponge docks isn't important to all of us on the board, I don't think that's a true statement in any regard. I think the sponge docks holds a very special place in all of our lives, and obviously for the Tarpon Springs residents as a whole and the tourism business for Tarpon Springs. I just want to touch on that, because I know it's been brought up multiple times, that the city doesn't do anything in the sponge docks, but I think it's pretty clear, based on what I just talked about, the city actually does a lot for the sponge docks and for the business owners in the sponge docks. With that, we are always, I am always open for additional suggestions. I'm always available to be reached by my email. You can reach me on my cell phone. It's pretty much everywhere you could find. I've got it posted. But in this situation, I really feel it's best to do some more due diligence on all their alternatives, and I don't have any further comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. Thank you for, you just covered exactly what I was going to say, the money that we actually spending down at the sponge docks. And Mrs. Oliveras is not correct when he says that, that we don't care about the sponge docks. And he made a comment that we never go to the sponge docks. I'm there every day. Besides that, we had directed, as I said earlier, we had directed Mr. Licouris, the city manager, to have a town hall meetings, to get information from the people, to get the input from the residents, the input from the business owners, from the, from the property owners, to give us, to give us their opinion, to give us their recommendation, what other improvements that we should do. Perhaps this rock should might be the right thing to have, because I brought up the idea almost two years ago, and that was because it was offered to us by the mayor of Kalimnos. That didn't materialize, because now we'll see that was not really the right thing, because we don't have the input from the people. We do not have, just like Vice, former Mayor Prodos says, that we need to have a working plan, and I agree with her. We need to have a plan exactly what we should do. We don't want to go back the way it was the previous project. They were having several meetings with the, with the local business people. They were working on it for a year, year and a half, and then it never materialized. We need to have a plan and stick with it and make it happen. That's my, that's my input. This is my, my take on that.
Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And again, I do want to emphasize that they're not going to give us these pallets unless we buy more of them. So that is a discount. It's buy seven, get 10 free. It's not, here's 10 free pallets. But also, I really value the public input tonight. Again, I mean, this is something that we need to focus on, because there's really no backup for this item, which is why we need public input such as yours to fill in the blanks. All we have to work with, as far as backup goes for this item, is a single-page email with a couple pictures and just a paragraph saying that, hey, there's a quote with the pricing, and then one letter that says, hey, we'll give you 10 pallets for free if you work with us in the future. And that's it. So we just got one letter promising free pallets, and then a couple pictures and less than a paragraph of, hey, I got a quote. So this is why we really do need public input, because right now, we're not working with a lot up here. So I am looking forward to the results of that Friday meeting. But again, this is not a donation.
Connor, we discussed this thoroughly, this item, a few months ago, and there was lots of backup. I didn't want to start that whole discussion all over again tonight, but you are aware of what this whole project was, because we discussed it thoroughly back in November, right?
I don't believe we did discuss it thoroughly. I think back in November, I had the same problem with a lack of backup. I think it was just this email at the time, and maybe a couple more. And all we've added since then is this letter. And if we did have backup back then, then why wouldn't it be with the item tonight?
Yeah, it should have been, but we had a specialist owner of the rock quarry here speaking about it, speaking about her company, this local company. We discussed this whole project thoroughly. So this is a new development, getting the 10 pallets for free. So that is a new development, but everything else is the same from November. If you guys, you know, are not going to go with it, as far as a donation, I don't know what, you know, this contractor's going to do, but, you know, we are having a meeting Friday morning and hope this will be discussed, because we can't talk about it for three years like we did the revitalization process. We talked about it for three years, and then we didn't do anything. We can't just keep talking. We have to start making some changes and moving forward, and that's where my frustration is, because, like I said, this is something I've talked about for a long time, too.
But from the board perspective, no information has changed, aside from this discount of buy seven pallets, get 10 free. That's the only thing new that's been introduced since October.
Right. Because that was offered to us, so I wanted to bring it forward to the board, because I, you know, it's a gift of 10 pallets. It's not going to cover the whole thing, but it'll cover the section, most of the section that we were talking about.
I mean, regardless of the discount, my point is, is that, you know, when we discussed this before, I think there was a general consensus that we had a lack of backup. I remember just working with like a single page of information.
We had about four or five pages, and plus, there's more pictures in your agenda on this.
They're not here tonight.
They're in the agenda.
Okay.
Do we have any new information? Because we need to move forward.
No new information at all.
Okay. If we don't have any new information, the chair will entertain a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to defer pending further community input.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
No.
Vice Mayor Tarpani?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Licouris, when you going to have the town hall meeting?
Friday at 8:45.
Okay.
Where's it going to be?
It's going to be at Dimitri's Restaurant.
Why don't we have it here in the, in a city property?
Okay.
Why don't we have it in a private restaurant instead?
First of all, I didn't really want to get into that comment, but those of you who have been around the row and remembered, I'm sure Townsend wasn't, some of you other on the board, you should probably remember and stuff. You remember how we were scolding for holding meetings in the formal setting of City Hall that we should go to where the people are, we should have the meetings there, we shouldn't bring everyone, because people are intimidated to come here. That's what we were scolded on, and we bring it down to the people on the docks. We've done it. I've done meetings at Dimitri's before, there's been meetings at Costa. To me, that's not an issue. Remember, this is my you sending me down there to do it. As we talked before, after we had that last agenda item, you as a board should hold another meeting with all the people of Sponge Docks, whether it be a special session or whatever. This is just phase one, because there's a lot of things they're going to tell us down at the docks that are really not, you know, city commission item for later budget, like the, like the pressure wash and the cleaning. A lot of those things, we're going to go into as we get this stuff. If you remember, that's the first step of the town hall meetings. The second step of the town hall meetings is for you as a board to have it in here there. I like, and I've done, I'm going to Green Dolphin in, Green Dolphin in April. I've done these town hall meetings, and we do them at different places. We look at size and stuff. It's never been an issue before that. We thank the places like Dimitri's and stuff that give us a place in the center of the docks to do it, and unless this board has the majority to tell me not to do it, that's the way that works, and I'm going to continue to do it that way. That's just 8:45 to bring them here instead of bringing them in the setting. It doesn't make sense.
Let me tell you my position.
Okay.
The venue, I don't care about the venue. I don't, I don't mind going to the people, but I do think that it's smart to have some kind of recording or some minutes, just for our own, for our own purposes, you know, to look back on. That's, that's all I'm saying. I don't care if you go to Dimitri's or not.
And if we remember, during the public comments early in the beginning of the meeting, we had a comment that was from former Mayor Prodos about that, that we should have it in the area where it can be taken minutes and placed where it can be, you know, in the city property, it can be done in steadings or restaurants. We had that comment early in the meeting.
But I didn't want to disagree. Again, I disagree with that comment. That's not, on these town hall things, that's not what we've done, to go down and seek people. We're calling it down, you know, if you want me, you can say I miss. You want to hold it here and tell the people of docks to come here, we can change and do it. That's not how we've done things in the past. We've been successful with going down to the places and doing it. You know, we can, we can record, or we can take some, we can take a tape recorder. I'm sure the clerk can give us a tape recorder to take it down there and stuff. But again, some of the same people who scolded us for not having it at City Hall were the ones that came forward and said, we need to go out of the community and do it. So you just tell me a majority which way to do it, and I'll do it that way. But I intend to do it. But I intend to do it this way until you as my bosses tell me to do it another way, because that's how we've gone down different places and done. You know, it's, you know, again.
I don't care about the location. I think that, I don't even care about the minutes being public record, like official record. I just think that for our own benefit, I mean, they could, but I'm just saying for our own benefit to look back on the meeting, to see what was said over the course of a four-hour meeting, and then, or two, or whatever, and then you call on them six months from now, obviously, you forget what was said. So I just think that it's beneficial to have some kind of record of it, that's all.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Anything?
Yes.
I want to thank those of you that sat here for four hours waiting for this to come up. I know some business owners had to leave, but I appreciate you coming and sitting through a whole meeting to discuss this. As far as having the meetings at different venues, we've had many meetings on the SpongeDucks at restaurants, and are at Jimmy's Sponge Shop, when we were having all those meetings about the revitalization plan. So you're right, you know, Mark, you came to where the people were and the businesses were to discuss things, and I don't see any problem with that.
Honestly, I don't have a problem with what we have it. It's just that we got the comments from a respectable citizen earlier in the meeting that we should have it in an area that it's, you know, it's going to be open to the public, where people can come, that it's a city property, and everybody feel comfortable. So we can't do something on one and not the other. That's the point that I want to make.
I agree with the mayor, just because I feel as though it can get into the thing of, well, whose restaurant are we going to? Well, what's the rotation? Well, what's the criteria for my restaurant to be next up for the meeting? I just feel kind of like it's a slippery slope, but at the same time, I also, I do think that the minutes should be taken. I think there should be some public record of what was said.
Well, I suggest if we do this, we just have a special session here, we have it recorded, and let them come here and tell all of us at the same time then.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion, if that's the way we want to do it.
Let's do the, go ahead and do that one, since you have your schedule, but the next one will be in the city, city property, where everybody feel comfortable to come.
No.
No. Thank you. Okay, so let's move to the next item, which is item number 26, donation of art for a public safety building.
This was something heard at the Public Art Committee meeting, about a piece of art to be donated to the fire department. They had already talked to the fire chief, and he agreed to accept it, so we're bringing it formally to you tonight to approve the artwork that Chief Young is going to display at the fire department. As recommended by the Public Art Committee.
Well, it looks like we have the recommendation, like you said, from the Public Art Committee, and also the fire department will accept that in the lobby.
Yes.
I want to ask, I'll see that attorney, do we need some kind of an agreement between the city and the donor? How's that work?
It probably would be a good idea, so that we can nail down the issue of actual ownership, maintenance, if maintenance needs to be done, who's going to complete it, whether or not we're obligated to insure it or otherwise maintain it. So we probably should have some type of agreement with the owner of the art. If, in fact, it's just an outright donation, and there's no requirement to do any of that, and we don't feel that there is going to be the need for maintenance of it, since it is inside the structure, inside the firehouse, then there would be nothing other than a donation letter. So I'm seeing a photograph of what I think is the artwork. I'm not really sure, you know, if it requires maintenance in the future, or whether or not we want to be responsible for that.
I don't believe so.
Okay. So it'd be just like a piece of art that would hang on a wall, like a photograph?
Yes.
Okay. So no, I think that, then Mayor, all we need is just a letter saying that he or she is donating to the fire department.
And if we can send a thank you letter to that, to her, and we tell her we appreciate the donation. Vice Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Attorney covered it. I was just going to ask that, in the event that it is an actual donation, we do have something memorialize the, you know, not a bill of sale, but a formal transfer of ownership.
Yeah, just something I wanted to make sure. I appreciate the artist for the donation, and, you know, she's super talented. But, so, it depicts a building being destroyed from a fire?
I believe it has to do with the towers.
Is it?
I believe that's the depiction of it.
Okay, I just didn't really understand what it was. But I mean, if the fire department's fine with it going in there, then that's fine with me.
I believe it's abstract art of the twin towers.
Okay.
Room for interpretation.
Oh, boy, all right.
I don't have any comments. Any other comments?
No comments here.
Commissioner Carr, you have any comments?
I think it'd be a great idea to accept it.
All right. So do we have a motion to, motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept the public art donation.
Second.
Public safety building.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Next, we'll go to, oh, I guess, any public comments on that item? Seeing none. We'll go to the item 27, appointment to the Public Art Committee. How would you like to handle that, Mr. Licour?
At their public art meeting, there was a member that didn't meet the attendance requirements, so by the authority of the ordinance, they are asking you to replace. Here's the list of, the list of people that have put in, including some people, as you read the back of this, have some very extensive art experience, and a couple of these members as far as art. So they're asking you to appoint somebody from this list.
Let's go down the list, and there's only one vacancy, so we'll start with Commissioner Carr.
I would, at this point, recommend, is it Michaela? I have no idea how to say the last name.
All right, one for her. Commissioner Donovan?
I'm also good with Michaela Oberlander, but just something to touch on real quick, just so I better understand the situation. There's a note in here from Sandra Holovar, and basically, she asked the Chair of the Board, hey, due to a work conflict, I missed the past few meetings, can they be an excused absence? And it seemed as though that the Board, it says, the Board indicated that they weren't aware of that being possible. So I just think in the future, you know, that's completely up to the Chair as far as, you know, the excused absences go in that Board, but I think just in the future, maybe that's something we should brief our Boards on a little bit better, is just that, hey, you can't have an excused absence if it's work-related, sick-related, something like that. I mean, we do it up here all the time. And she's getting kicked off the Board because she had unexcused absences, but she asked if they could be excused, and the Board said, well, I don't know if they can be excused, so no. So that's just something to keep in mind, is just maybe we should kind of better brief our Boards on the fact that they can be excused. But I do support Michaela Oberlander.
Okay, I'll support her, too. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Michaela Oberlander to fill the vacated position by Sandra Holovar as alternate number two for the Public Art Committee.
Second.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. So we're at 27, Mayor, we have a motion and a second for Michaela Oberlander.
Okay.
There's been no public comment on the item.
Thank you.
Just need to call the vote.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
And Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Now we'll go to the last one, which is number 28, appointment of Heritage Preservation Board. We have two options on that. One of the options that we have, well, we received a notification that Carol Johnson has resigned, so they created an opening. One of the options we have is to move up the alternate, which is Mrs. Ryan, as a regular member, to fill the unexpected term of Carol Johnson. His term will expire May 31, 2021, and we need to appoint a person from the list as an alternate member. And that term will expire May 31, 2020. The second option that we have is just to appoint one of the people on the list. So I would prefer that we do option one, and give the opportunity to, to the alternate member, which is Ms. Ryan, she's doing a good job with that, to, and attending every meeting. So that would be my, my option one. And if we select Philip Ronziski, if I say that correct, he completed the Citizens Academy. I know he personally, I met him, he's a very, very intelligent person. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I also think Michelle Ryan has been doing a nice job as an alternate, and I would move to appoint her as the regular member, and to appoint Georgie Andretti as the alternate member. George has been doing a significant amount of renovation and restoration around town, and investing in our history, so I think he is more than qualified to guide us on this Board.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr?
I'll take that title. I said, I'll take that title. You called me Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry. You take the title.
I do support, I do support your recommendation, Mayor, as stated, with moving Michelle Ryan to regular member, and to be honest with you, the two are Georgie and Philip, I think both of them have great qualifications. I'm going to go with Philip on this one, though. He's got some experience working in a historic commission already, and a zoning administrator for 10 years of a city up in Wisconsin, so I think it's a nice, he'd make a nice improvement to this Board.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Terapany to move Michelle Ryan up and have Mr. Andretti as a alternate. He is very interested in our community, and has been buying properties and redeveloping them, and doing a lot for our city, and I feel he can be a value on this Board as well.
Commissioner Donovan?
I support option one, for Michelle Ryan to be moved to fill the unexpired term, and I would like to appoint Philip.
Need a motion? Looks like Philip has got three votes.
Motion to approve Michelle Ryan as regular member, and Philip as alternate member.
Give a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
No.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
No.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that concludes the regular session, and we go to Steph Cummins, Chief.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney?
I just want to follow up on the email that I sent earlier today. This afternoon, I attended the hearing on the motion for summary judgment of foreclosure on the property located at 500 East Oakwood. You remember, this is the church that was in such a state of disrepair. The judge heard the arguments, the judge orally advised that she was going to go ahead and sign the final judgment of foreclosure. I assume that it'll receive in the next couple of days. I asked for the earliest sale date, and so that will happen within the next 45 days. I asked the judge to be aware of the fact that there is a tax deed sale pending for April 15, and we'd like to get the sale done before the tax deed sale, so that we can pay off the taxes and take control of the property, and then obviously, it's going to come back here for some direction as to what you're going to do with it. But it was a successful hearing today, and I want to let you know that was completed. I did reassure Mr. Emerson, who appeared at the hearing, that the, that this will not affect him personally in any way, this is just dealing with the church property itself. I'd be happy to answer any other questions offline, if you have any, but I want to let you know that that has been completed.
City Manager? Madam City Clerk?
Just would like to remind everybody on Saturday about Touch a Truck?
Yeah.
No one mentioned it, from 10 to 2, in front of the library.
Okay. Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. We did celebrate my birthday last commission meeting, and I appreciate that, but I did want to bring, yeah, I did want to bring up one additional birthday, and that would be the city of Tarpon Springs, celebrated 133 years on February 12. So that's a pretty great accomplishment to many, many more years of great success to the city of Tarpon Springs. There's a couple of things I want to talk about, though, from moving forward from Board agendas, and I would like to see some action made on these, and if we need to have a consensus, I would like to discuss this as well. Before I was elected a Commissioner, I did serve on the Historic Preservation Board and the Planning and Zoning Board combined for about seven years. And this was brought up multiple times by all the Board members, part of those Boards. And it recently was brought to my attention that this happened again, similar to the Planning and Zoning Board this past week. And these are volunteer boards, obviously, they're not getting paid, and I would almost say, we're close to being volunteers here on the City Commission as well, with the amount of information that we have, the research and time to put in. And I think it might be wise, or I think it definitely would be wise, to start requiring the city staff to produce the backups at least a week, I would say, the Friday before where they're produced today. So for instance, this past meeting, it was, the agenda packet was supplied on Friday afternoon on February 21 for this meeting. And so with this, I would like to see it moved back to, it would be February 14 for this meeting, so there'd be a week and a half of research, due diligence that can be done, discussions. Again, these are all not our full-time positions, and we've got to put some time in it. We owe the respect to the residents and also the applicants to make sure that we all understand the application as well as we do. And then when it gets to the Board members for the planning and zoning and the other Boards, I think it's imperative also to have that information in front of them, because again, these are volunteers, they're full-time employees. Elsewhere, they run their own businesses, and time is a valuable thing. And to have just a weekend to study this isn't enough, in my opinion, based on my experience in the past. So I think it's respectful to the citizens, I think it's respectful to the Board members, and I think it's also respectful to the applicants to have more time and to push the requirement up to have, I don't know what you'd call it, the submission date. That's what I've got back from the Board members when I was on the Board, and I've also received calls, too, from current Board members, saying it's just not enough time to research and to read the backup that they need to. That's all my comments tonight.
Yes, we'll talk.
Just to touch on what Commissioner Carr said for a minute, I think that there's, obviously, anytime you can get the information sooner than later, that's productive, but if you look at, to a degree, that there's got to be some exceptions, because if we're saying that, like, the submission date for an agenda is a week and a half out, and then in some cases, how does that affect, like, our applications that are heard by, like, the Planning and Zoning Board or other Boards that meet, this is just me thinking out loud, right, other Boards that meet, you know, once a month, that then go to us, if that application doesn't progress to us because it doesn't meet the agenda deadline of, like, let's say, a week and a half out, what does that then do for the applicant's timeframe? You know what I mean? That's my only, that's my only thought. Other than that, I think anytime we can get the information out, you know, sooner than later, and available to the public, or the Board members, or even ourselves, that's a good thing. So, you know, as we look at it, or staff looks at it, just, I would give some consideration to, you know, some extenuating circumstances as it relates to some applications. But other than that, I don't have much to report. Mayor, it's been some beautiful weather here in Tarpon Springs, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Yeah. Commissioner Seaver?
Yeah, I wasn't going to comment, but Commissioner Carr brought up our volunteer committees and Boards, and I had asked for this before with, I talked to Mark about this, doing some kind of recognition of our volunteer boards every year, like, like the library does for the Friends of the Library, that we recognize those members, because they are volunteer Board members, they're citizens of our city, and they need to be respected. So I'd like for us to really talk about this in the near future, of what we can do.
I agree.
I think it's a great idea. City Clerk, Ms. Jacobs, did you work on something? City Clerk, Ms. Jacobs, did you are working on something like that?
We are working on that, and we haven't set a specific date yet, but it'd be sometime before April and after the election.
Yeah. Okay. Because I know you do. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just before I get into my comments regarding Commissioner Carter's comments, I do think that we need to get those agendas as early as we can, because sometimes that poses a problem to the staff as well, being that if I get my agenda and my backup on a Friday afternoon, I got the weekend to look at it, sure, but that only leaves me Monday, Tuesday to get to city staff and say, hey, here's a question I might be asking about on Tuesday night. So, that just kind of, that kind of creates a problem for, if I'm trying to give people a heads-up in advance, I'm going to be asking highly technical questions, like we do at Bob and really any department head sometimes. The more time in advance that we have, the better. I'm not sure about the legality or the precedent that other cities have done as far as setting something a week in advance. The only thing that I could see hurting would be commissioners in, like, an emergency situation. So, you know, say, back in August or late July with the Junior Spongers thing, when Junior Spongers, it was discovered they were going defunct, I put that Junior Spongers item on the agenda for the next meeting. We talked about it, boom, something got done. I think that happened on, like, a Friday, and I put it on there, like, with, like, three days in advance or something like that. So, that's the only thing that I could see that hindering, but I do think that we need to look into something in terms of trying to get backup as quick as we can. So, if that's some, I would definitely be wanting to get more information on that. I don't know if city manager or city attorney would send us something in terms of, hey, here's something that other cities have done in similar situations, but I definitely get the desire to have that, and I would support looking into that further.
Yeah. Commissioner Carter, you brought that up once before, and that's how we created the draft agenda, remember? Does it work okay with you with that?
Sometimes, but not always.
That was a great idea.
Yeah. Sometimes it works, but then again, it doesn't address our volunteer boards as well.
Okay.
I just, when I've talked to other cities, I know that other cities do require applications to be in at a certain time, so they get to the commission for review more timely.
I have some comments I'd like to make. Saturday, February 29, we have the Wine Walk downtown, yeah, downtown at the Sponge Duck Star starts at 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. March 5, we have the Sunset Beach Concert that begins at 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. March 6 is the first Friday event downtown on Tarpon Avenue, begins at 6:00 p.m. March 7, we have the Hook Kids on Fishing that's sponsored by our Recreation Department at the Spring Bayou, and that begins at 10:00 a.m. And also, I had the privilege to attend at the agreement when the two universities, actually the St. Petersburg College and the University of Aegean, of roads, they signed an agreement, which is a big thing. That was done electronically via Skype. So, that was, that's going to be very beneficial to our students. That's going to enhance teaching, learning experience internationally, which means we'll be able to exchange students from St. Petersburg College to the University of Aegean and from the Aegean University here. So, I think it's going to be very beneficial. Right now, the two universities are talking to each other to come up with different programs, and they're hoping by August it's going to start. So, I think it's a good thing. Well, that concludes-
Mayor, actually, sorry, real quick.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I had two additional comments. I was just, I was just talking about Commissioner Carter's kind of thing that he brought up.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I'll hear you finish.
One, I just wanted to say real quick, I want to thank the police dog that came out for Little League. I mean, that was awesome. That was something that I thought was really cool. I know, you know, I don't know if we'd have done it in the past at all, but that's something that we definitely should continue to do for opening days and for really anything that involves kids, because they just love the dog. And, you know, we got to, got to see the mayor throw a high-heat fastball, strike right down the, right down the pipe. So, that was a great event in general, and the police dog really, really made it. So, that was really cool. So, props to our police department for that. And then, real quick, I just wanted to, as far as the sign, the sign, the sign ordinance that we deferred tonight, do we have any plans currently to, like, hold a town hall session or meet with business owners or just hold, like, even like an open, like, hey, if you're a business owner, you want to talk about it with the commissioner, come on by? Or is this kind of something that we're just going to defer to a next meeting and commissioners can work on on their own?
Mr. LaCuis, what you have planned to pass over?
Well, I think the best way to do it is to, depending now, you've got an agenda the 10th that is tremendous. We're finishing up all the business. It's either have a special session where you hear everybody and address the issues and to do, because I think the issues are still, when you read, when you read, when you read the letters and the concerns, it's basically the three or four things that we had talked about all along that was going to be at issue. And remember, some of the problem of this one is the ordinance came out like it was because we didn't have a, we had probably two twos on, but we didn't have a consensus of what some of those issues are. The only additional ones that I can see that's came up, I mean, there is one thing about umbrella signs, but that's, that's easy for you to decide. Do you want advertising of beers or products on umbrellas on the sidewalk cafes or not? That hadn't come up before, but that's a pretty easy one. The five of you, that's an easy one to decide on. The other issues, the sandwich signs, the bench signs, the pole or monument signs, that's all the things we've heard from the people. So, that's the thing we need to hash out with them and stuff, and we kind of know the issues because we kind of saw it here, especially, let's use example, the sandwich board signs. It was two to two, you know? So, we're going to kind of know from what the things are. They don't want to be restricted to the chalk signs, they want some alternatives that we got to decide on. I could almost, you know, on each issue, we could talk about the something to decide on. So, how you want to do that or what avenue you want them to do, they probably just need to come, and again, I would say it'd be a special session just to hear the thoughts of all the business community on the signs for you to make a decision on, because, again, they really don't even know your final decision on, for instance, sandwich board signs, because we could not resolve it at the last, at the last meeting, so the language in the sign ordinance stayed the same. So, that's the best way I would see on doing it, just like the way I envisioned on the docks was me to go down and deal with all of the issues, and then they come to you, especially as we get, you know, into budget season, which starts in April, and we have a new commission for them to come. And again, there's not much rooms on the agenda to hold a line like this, so it'd probably be a special session where you address the thing and, well, special session so the, so the-
Comments.
So, the public can comment. You just call it a special session.
That's how they can comment at a workshop. No.
Workshops are, but that's why you'd call it a special session, and it'd be just on the issues at the docks and discuss. And that's probably what you need to do and what other places have done, might have a special session just where you hear all the business community on the sign, because I could pretty much tell you how it's going to go.
So, I'm concerned about the communication from the city level to the business owners. I think it would be best to have some type of meeting set up with the business owners first from city staff level and then come, and I'm happy to do a special session, but I think there should be a couple tiers to at least explain what the sign code's about, what the different things that we're proposing, that staff has proposed change, to explain that first and then have a special session at that point.
The only thing is, I can't explain the issues that they're of most concern are because I really don't know where this board's at on those issues.
That doesn't necessarily matter if you're just explaining what the, how it's currently proposed and the, like, how we have in our agenda book, how it's proposed, right, that the staff prepared to bring before us. So, just explain it to them and say, this is what's proposed, and we'll have a special session. If you don't like certain things, we'll also bring that up in that time, but let's go over and explain that this is what this means, this is what a monument sign is, this is what a pole sign is. You think it might be obvious, but not necessarily. This is what we've seen in other cities, right? So, it's not like we're just taking this out of the feather of our hat and just kind of making it up, like, these are things that we've seen in other areas, right?
Yeah. I think it's very important that we communicate with the people because the planning and zoning, everybody voted against it because they didn't understand what the material was all about. So, and there was not given enough time for them to read all the material because they only had it for a few days, and you know how big it is. So, I don't know how many pages-
Well, again, I-
It was very lengthy for them to do that, so I think it's good to communicate that.
We may even bring that back to them and make sure-
I was going to say-
And make sure we even, we have the attorney there who handles the sign to answer those questions that we do. So, I'd almost recommend that we redo, and then there's another chance for the citizen to be at, and we make sure that Mr. Eschenfelder is at that planning and zoning meeting to ask those technical questions that's come up, the teleplanning is on the board, that they're going to see it again, give them more time to study and do that. I would even say as a result of that and the fact that they didn't get together to even, even go through another level besides us meeting with the merchants, having, having maybe a special session here where you can hear from everybody collectively and then to redo, to bring it again with more time for them to look at it, maybe, maybe an outline of some of the, you know, the technical things that are law and, you know, you know, that's what case law is and the things they're determined, again. And that would take care of those issues. But, again, the main issues are still the issues, the four issues that we've brought out and talked about, and that's going to be the main brunt of what you're going to get from the audience, and that's what is in all the letters, just about every letter you see.
That's what token of it.
Aside from political signs, that was a new one that's coming today, but besides that, it's the same issues that we're dealing with.
Any other comment? Well, that concludes the regular session meeting, and it's adjourned at 10:45 p.m.